As soon as we get a green light, folks, we'll start the meeting. Here we go. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, meeting of the Edina City Council. You might be watching on cable TV or watching it live on your computer. We're going to do this in a hybrid format, which is what we've been doing over the past couple of months. So as Director Bennerott mentioned, there's going to be two chances tonight for you to participate in either community comment or public hearing matters, and you can do it live or you can do it remote. So if you are watching the meeting remote and you want to be able to call in either for community comment or for a public hearing matter, and Director Bennerott is correct, there are nine of them this evening, call 800-374-0221. That's 800-374-0221. And the conference ID number is 717-6364. You'll identify yourself to the person that's screening callers, and you'll end up in the queue, and Director Bennerott will bring you in to talk to the council if you're coming in virtually. Other than that, you can come up to the podium as decorum permits. Other people may also want to come up, and you'll just have to figure out how to defer to each other in a particular matter. So with those preliminary matters in mind, let's call the meeting to order, and roll call, please, Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Hears?
Here.
Councilmember Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next matter for us is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a form of meeting agenda that's been published, both to the council and to the public in general. Is there anyone in the council that wishes to modify the meeting agenda or anyone from staff? Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Second. Member Jackson moves. Member Staunton seconds. The adoption of the meeting agenda is shown. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. And now we are at the point, first point, where we can have public participation on matters of concern to them. This is community comment. And again, the number, if you want to call in to speak during community comment, the number is 800-374-0221. And the conference ID is 717-6364. Remember that you cannot address during community comment anything that's on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing. So those are the two limitations on addressing the council on a matter of concern to you during the community comment portion of the agenda. So we're going to ask, first of all, are there any folks in the audience that wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing? Yes, sir. You had your hand up first. Please. Come on up to the side podium. Do you have any thing that you want to disseminate or use as an overhead exhibit?
No, thanks.
Okay.
I'm Steve Anderson, 4405 Grimes Avenue South, and I read the open letter, and I was wondering how Edina might respond to the open letter that was in the 23rd Sun Current. And my main concern is that the alleged problem of city engineers not listening to the mayor, as stated in there, will impact the Morningside flood plan, which is, I live in Morningside, so I'm concerned. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Glad to see you this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Carmen Roseland. I live at 6033 St. John's Avenue, and I've lived there for 28 years. My husband is a lifelong Edina resident. I provided each of you a letter highlighting the city ordinance violations associated with the property at 4516, 4518 Valley View Road. I did initially try to reach out to the tenant and the property owner, but had no luck. I would like to submit the copy of the city ordinance violations as part of the public record. The violations have been occurring since May 2020. I wrote a letter to the city dated January 4, 2021. Some progress was made, but much remained. I wrote a letter to the city manager on July 7, and we met on July 19. I left that meeting with the understanding that the city would, in fact, enforce the city ordinances. On August 5, I received a call from Jeff Brown of inspections that no further action would be taken. That was followed up with yet another letter to the city manager dated August 6. I've also left a voicemail with him. So on August 5, Jeff Brown tells me no further action will be taken, and today I get an email from the city manager filled with "we can review." "We can review" is not an action plan to enforce the city ordinances. I do not have time in this forum to review each of these city ordinance violations, but I would like to address two of them. The dog that resides at 4518 Valley View Road has lived there for about two years. It is evidenced by my eyewitness accounts, the reports of the dog off-leash that have been reported to the police department, and the barking dog on the property, and the piles of dog feces on the property. The city has told me that the dog first was licensed in the city of Lakeville. I informed the city that the city of Lakeville does not license their dogs. So now they are backpedaling and saying that it only visits from time to time. The dog does, in fact, reside there, and it is not licensed. It has no verification of rabies or other vaccination and is amongst mice. I was not going to bring up the mice issue, but since Mr. Neal did in his email, I will. I spoke with both Orkin and Plunkets. They explained to me that they do, how they do things. Well, there are no bait stations on the exterior of the property. That would be the first thing they would do. So I am unclear as to exactly how Mr. McCarthy is addressing the mouse infestation problem. The problem is leeching into the neighborhood. I contacted the city 271 days ago. Today, I received an email from the city manager regarding the update of the ordinance violations, filled with the quote "can review." Kind of makes a person ask what's been going on for the past 271 days. The lack of openness, honesty, transparency, and lack of communication is abhorred, and the failure to enforce the city ordinance is tops it all. There has been no resolution to a dozen of city ordinance violations, some I would consider to be quite serious. The city staff has been dancing around the licensing and rental inspection of the property. I thought I was told that the license had been applied for, but in today's email from Mr. Neal, the license has not yet been applied for. The whole property is out of compliance, and it would appear that the city is complacent with it.
Ms. Roseland, I've let you drift over the three-minute mark.
I will close by asking the city council to consider, one, enforce the city ordinance as adopted by the city council. It has been 271 days. And, two, inspect the property at 4516, 4518 Valley View Road as part of the rental licensing program. And if you would, request that the city manager follow up with me with any actions the city council may decide to take and the progress being made to bring this property into compliance. Thank you for your time and your consideration and the extension.
Thank you. And would you submit that as part of the record as well?
This?
Your written comments?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. If you hand them to the clerk, then we'll have those.
This is the my allegations.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda this evening or otherwise set for a future public hearing? All right. Let's go to the virtual world and see if we have anybody waiting to speak to the council on a matter of concern to them.
Good evening, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. We are connected to intercall, but I do not have any callers on the line at this time because we have been advertising that opportunity for more than a minute now. I think it is safe for you to move forward with your agenda.
All right. Thank you, Director Bennerott. And Assistant Manager Schaefer, with respect to the question that Steve Anderson raised, did you get the question? I didn't quite get the question that he had, but I thought, you know, our practice is to answer the questions that are propounded in the community comment portion of the agenda at the following meeting, so it gives our staff a chance to respond and look up some of the things that may be pertinent. So I just want to make sure that we had his question properly recorded.
I do have his question. It was a response to the open letter in the Sun Current.
All right. Okay. And then Ms. Roseland has submitted her material. So then let's move on. The next, as I mentioned, the next matter is that we typically have the city manager's response to community comments that occurred at the prior meeting. And Assistant Manager Schaefer, do you have anything to report out on from the prior meeting?
Mayor, I do not have anything to report. We had one community commenter at the last meeting, and he was commenting on the International Day of Peace. He did not have a question.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Next matter on the agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda items in a single motion.
So moved.
All right. Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds. Adoption of the consent agenda is published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda in its totality, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. One thing that we usually do, and this is the last item as part of the consent agenda, as a council, when we get a donation to the city, we have to accept that with a supermajority, four-fest vote by state law. And we usually like to let folks know publicly, in addition to publishing on our website, the donations that come into the city. And I just wanted to make a quick observation here about the donations that came in to the Park and Recreation Department. Scott Lejonvaren, L-E-J-O-N-V-A-R-N, Lejonvaren donated two Honeycrisp apple trees to the city with a value of $2,000. Craft Homes LLC, a tree donation for $350. Peter Dinevich, 10 trees at Coateen Park, almost a $10,000 cost there. The Tree Trust that we're working with, 75 trees at Fred Richards Park and along Nine Mile Creek. The Edina Community Foundation donated 15 copies of the Sculpting a Life book done by our own Nick Legaros, who's just a terrific sculptor that resides in Edina and has done so many things, both at Centennial Lakes, and then if you've seen the statue of Willard Eichler over at the ice rink, he did that one as well. So those are some copies that we're going to have available, thanks to the Community Foundation and their executive director, Dick Crockett. Pacey Irk, longtime Edina resident, former Edina school teacher, $1,000 for two memorial fund paver stones. And Lindsey Klein, the $350 donation for a tree for the Creek Valley School Park. So thanks to all of those donors to the city of Edina and our Park and Rec Department in particular. Greatly appreciated, and we're going to publish those names on the website. Next, we are going to move on to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda, and we're fortunate this evening, we've got a nice group of people in the audience, to get an update from our Hennepin County Sheriff, David Hutchinson. Sheriff Hutch, I think as most folks know him, has really been a delight to work with. He was at our 9/11 event that was put on by some of the members of our community down at Dudley Park at the Veterans Memorial. Took time to come to that after being out in Wayzata in the morning. And then, of course, we want to laud the Hennepin County Sheriff's Department for the work they did around the tragic death of the little two-and-a-half-year-old girl that perished in Edina. And the county was a terrific partner as we searched for her and hoped that she was still living. So, and then you've got two Somali-American deputies that I had a conversation with that I thought it was a terrific idea to be able to have them there to help bridge any cultural gaps or language gaps that existed, to help folks understand exactly what was going on. So you've done some really nice planning in the department. So Sheriff, welcome. We look forward to your update.
Thank you very much. Can y'all hear me? All right. Again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council and city staff, and especially shout out to Lieutenant. Edina Police Department is a very progressive and good department. I think it's one of the best in the county. I think people, when they hear Edina PD, especially under the new leadership of Chief Melbourne, who I've grown to be very fond of, especially during the Brooklyn Center unrest. When he was with Brooklyn Park, he had a very large role in supervising the people and did a very, very good job. So very good pick with him. So whoever made that decision should maybe get a raise too. Again, thank you for the time to speak here. I think it's important to, you know, talk about the last year and a half, two years, and Hennepin County has been pretty challenging, not only for the county sheriff's office, but also local police departments with the trial. We had a lot of help from different agencies, including Edina. One thing we learned through all this is, many things we should have learned is, one of many is partnerships are important. We can't do our jobs with the sheriff's office without the city police like Edina and vice versa. You know, Crime Lab does a great job out here. And just a side note, last week or the week before, there was a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of cars stolen from a place in Edina, and the partnership between Edina Investigations and our BODA, Vandal Fender Task Force, those two cars were located very quickly in return of the owner. So again, partnerships and teamwork makes the dream work, as they say. You know, just to go over some numbers, 93 requests fulfilled by Edina for us. Eden Prairie, Edina, and a few other task forces are on this Southwest Drug Task Force. We had 77 related weapons in our cases. We did some subject workups, some address workups through our CSEC information sharing analysis, 26 HIDA, which is high intensity drug trafficking, and analytical support. So we've been busy, but those numbers actually are very low. And again, that goes to your well-funded and well-maintained police departments we all need in the Twin Cities. Investigations, we had eight subpoena services. I think we assisted in one death investigation. Again, we've worked with your PD with information, certainly carjackings, robberies by juveniles. Again, last week, we recovered some very expensive cars from Edina taxpayer, and I think you got them back in a day or two. So it's pretty good teamwork. The North Metro Training Facility, which is obsolete in Edina, you have your own training facility, but for us and other partners in the county, it's going to be a very high-tech, kind of futuristic, if you will, modern training facility that we're going to add on to the existing Maple Grove Training Facility. The county board was luckily, thankfully, won 7-0 on a bar to pass the funding for that. And we all know, in local politics, to get seven people to agree on something, it's very important. I think the county board realized that this training facility is going to train cops to the next best level. And we talk about reform, we talk about this or that. I like to talk about, we're updating it. We're evolving this profession, and evolving consists of better training, consists of better funding, and it consists of us hiring and maintaining and retaining good officers. This will be a de-escalation. It will have, again, rooms that they can, you know, make different scenarios for SIM rounds. They have a very high-tech, you know, kind of training, live-fire thing. It's going to be, when it's done next year, it's going to be great. We're very excited. And one exciting thing we're talking about lately is hope, helping others through education, providing education, collaborating with local businesses and public schools to get our inmates trained a couple hours a day on anything from their high school diploma to a trade, to culinary, et cetera, et cetera. So we've got a huge outpouring of support from the community. Couple businesses like Autozone and several others have donated Chromebooks to the inmates so they can do their training. And Autozone has worked with us too about now hiring these people, even people with felonies, to get them back in some management training. Again, because if we help people get jobs, they can get stable housing, people with stable housing jobs commit less crimes. These people are paying taxes, and most importantly, they're not committing crimes and not in their jail. So I think it's a great program. We kind of stole it from a county in Michigan. The sheriff there and I became friends, and it's been a great partnership. And I think Councilmember Mr. Anderson mentioned opioids. So we've done a lot of opioid trainings. We're in person again, but during the COVID crisis, we had it online. We trained many, many people. We provided hundreds of Narcan kits to community members. And Narcan, for people who don't know, is the drug that stabilizes people after an overdose. We're training a ton of people. We also have the TURIBAGs, which are a safe alternative to get rid of your medications. We're doing a lot. We have medical assisted treatment in our jail, so people addicted to opioids can get medication to help them not, when they get out of custody, to not just go back in the street and become re-addicted. Violent crime, something that's affecting us all, from the north side to Edina to Rogers, violent crime is up, crime is up generally. And I really believe that it's because the anti-law enforcement rhetoric is starting to hit some people. And understand that law enforcement has made errors, especially locally in the last couple of years. But the majority of officers, the men and women, go out there and they do their best to their ability to stop crime, to help people. So when cities are governed like Edina with a good, solid government, a good staff members and a great police department, there's a reason why your crime rate is low, and there's a reason why I think a lot of people get treated with respect here more than just about any city, is because you believe that the way we can do this is treating people with respect, getting the best trained officers, and making sure we evolve as a profession like any other profession in America. We have to look at our errors, fix our errors, get community trust, and part of that is better training. But a lot of that is getting our, you know, rear ends out of the cars and talking to business owners and citizens and telling people, hey, we understand we made mistakes. But 99% of us are out here protecting you, protecting your livelihood, and we're going to continue doing that for the rest of time. And I just want people to note that I love this profession, being the sheriff is the greatest job in the world, because the only people I report to are the people, the voters or taxpayers of Hennepin County, and the citizens of Hennepin County. And with that, I just want to end as if Edina needs anything from us, you'll get it. We have a lot of work to do, but I'm confident in our ability to evolve, to make a better police department for everybody, a better sheriff's office for everybody. With that, I'll end and take questions, Mayor, if you wish.
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff. I think our city really appreciates the relationship we've had with Hennepin County in every way, whether it's with the county board or your office. It's been a tremendous level of partnership there, and we're deeply appreciative of it. Sometimes counties can forget about cities, and county boards get a little bit more remote from people. And we're the front line of democracy here at the local level, and that's why this is the most trusted level of government. So having those partnerships with your department and with the county board is really critically important, and we see the county board doing more and more work for people in our communities and having, I think, greater and greater connection to people than they sometimes might have had in the past. So that's really a nice thing to see coming, too. Councilmembers, any questions for the chief? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sheriff, for being here, and thank you for talking about partnerships. I know that we think of Edina and Bloomington and Richfield as having borders, but ordinary people don't, and crime doesn't see borders. So your partnership and coordination is really appreciated. That helps us all to be safer. So thank you so much. I have two questions for you, and they're related, so I'll ask them as one. Are you start, we're going to be doing some education on what cities can do to help dispose of opioids and address them. Do you have any new initiatives or any kind of education on that? And then the second question is the same thing for mental health, if you've got any new initiatives going on about mental health.
Sure, absolutely. So we are working with the TURIBAG company for, I think Edina may have some. We send all our agencies that request them, these paid through for a grant, I may add. So again, we do that. We do have Drug Take Back Day coming up here. I don't know the number exactly. I don't think there's one in Edina, but a couple Hy-Vee stores throughout the county. Again, you bring any medication, doesn't matter if it's opioids or anything, so bring that in. And also for education, our community outreach division does, sometimes they do, they just last, before COVID, we did a lot with East African population, talking about that because that community's been hit unusually hard lately. And so we went with our Somali-Ethiopian partners through our community outreach division and talked to the parents, and some of the parents don't speak English. So again, we use our Somali deputies to help us out. So we have a ton of new initiatives with that. I can follow up with you, too. I mean, I probably am missing a few, but I think we're really leaving the charge on that because opioids is still a problem, and unfortunately, methamphetamines is still a problem, if not a larger problem. But of course, it can't kill you as quickly. As far as mental health, we're doing a ton with mental health providers embedded in police departments, and eventually, we're going to grow that. We hired Chief Rizwell, the retired chief of Wayzata, works from our office, and he's kind of a liaison between the county to get this mental health provider mostly, and he's really hitting the Lake City hard because a lot of those smaller cities don't have the need for one full-time person. So again, the county would come take over with a deputy or have it to respond to these calls with the mental health provider. And we're also working on addiction counselors as well. But there's so many up and up and new things, like Denver is doing the STAR program, which is a triple responsive, licensed police officer, deputy, mental health worker, and addiction counselor, if you will. So we're experiencing that, experimenting with that eventually at some point. But again, we're working with our county partners, we're working with all these different jurisdictions, because we got to make sure that Edina can't do it on their own, Bloomington can't do it on their own, the county can't do it on their own. So, you know, Chief Potts, retired Chief Potts, had a really good program, so we're kind of growing that out. Eventually, we're going to have, you know, a nice thing is we have a social worker in the jail to help people when they exit with services, and also we have a social worker in the dispatch center. So if someone does call and this person has to be working, they can either give these services over 911, because sometimes a person doesn't know who else to call. Call 911, maybe I don't need care, I don't need an ambulance or a fire department or all these cops coming. Maybe I just need, you know, to go see my doctor, and this mental health or social worker could provide that information over the phone. Again, police aren't needed for every single call. I think that as we evolve, we use partnerships to be better, like what we've been doing for the last, you know, 20, 30 years. I think we've done a decent job, but I know we can do a lot better, and this is, again, pulling from our medical professionals, pulling from all these people, and I think this is where we're getting, slowly but surely, we're getting there.
Terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for the sheriff? I was hoping your parents would be here tonight, living in Edina.
Yeah, my parents are Edina residents, and they love the city of Edina, so thank you for making sure they're safe and sound, and I think the mayor's met them on a few walks too or something, something like that.
A walk with the mayor, yeah. They talked about coming, yeah.
They're everywhere. They walk around, they live off York, and they walk around there, so I'm sure you've seen them. My mom uses a walk, my dad rides electric bike, so I don't know.
All right. Sheriff, thanks for being with us this evening. It was always good to get your report on an annual basis.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
And we'll see you soon, I'm sure.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Take care.
That completes the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda this evening with that update from Sheriff Hutch. And then we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, and as Director Bennerott mentioned, we've got nine on the docket tonight. Some of them, I think, will be more engaging of community members than others, and we're trying to, I think, wait them in the way where we get the most public participation first, do we think those are the ones that'll, that people will want to talk to the council about. All of these public hearings tonight, as has been our practice since the beginning of COVID, we've been allowing presentations, first it was virtually and now in this hybrid form, and then we close the public hearing at noon the following week. And then we continue the action for the next council meeting. So in this circumstance, with regard to all of these nine hearings, the motions you'll hear tonight will not be with respect to whether to approve or disapprove the matter that's in front of us, but it will be to close the public hearing at noon on October 11, so you could continue to submit your comments in writing or call in and leave a message and continue the action to the October 19 city council meeting. So with that prefacing sort of information in mind, we're going to take on the first matter, which is a public hearing involving Resolution 2021-88, which is a request for a preliminary rezoning and preliminary development plan with multiple variances for city homes at 4630 France Avenue. And our community development director, Kari Teague, has this matter, and then we're going to hear from the developers. Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So as mentioned, this is located up in the northeast corner of the city, the west side of France. It is a single-family home, highlighted on the map here. Property is currently zoned R1, which is our single dwelling unit district. Just to the north is a PRD2 zoning district, that's the zoning that's being requested this evening. And this development, it includes two duplexes that are attached and served off of a private drive. Further to the south, we have this hatched area that's property zone for duplexes. Property is guided in our comprehensive plan for low-density attached residential. Here's a look at the existing home today. So what the applicant is proposing here is to tear that single-family home down and build two villa-style homes that would serve, gain access off of France, off of a private shared drive. So the specific request is a rezoning to that PRD2 district similar to the north, a preliminary plat to establish individual lots for each house, side yard setback variances from 20 feet to 7 and 15 feet, a rear yard setback variance from 35 to 25 feet, a building coverage variance, and a lot size variance for the, for the new lots. So this graphic indicates the required setbacks. So because of that 20-foot wide side yard setback, basically under a PRD2 zoning, the site is unbuildable, which would indicate that variances would be reasonable for the, for the side yards. The applicant did go through sketch plan, you may recall, this past spring, early summer. This is a look at that sketch plan, and note that in this plan, they showed a 25-foot setback to the rear and a 40-foot setback to France. So at that time, we talked about shifting the whole project toward France, so it would meet that 30-foot setback on France, and the 35-foot setback to the rear, which the applicant has revised their plans just this afternoon, and I'll show that later in the presentation, to comply with those two setbacks. So primary issues for consideration is the rezoning reasonable, and are the variances reasonable? So first, I'll start with the rezoning. Staff and the planning commission recommendation is to approve the rezoning. We believe it's reasonable in that it's consistent with that property to the north that has that PRD2 zoning designation. The lots are similar in size to the north, those lots are just under 4,400 square feet, and the proposed lots here are just over 5,000 square feet. So again, it would mirror that zoning district to the north. We believe that the relationship or spacing between the homes is, are reasonable. There'd be a 17-foot separation to the duplex to the north, and a 19-foot distance to the home to the south. So within our R1 zoning district, take the Country Club, for example, on 50-foot wide lots, a 5-foot setback is required. So we have a 10-foot separation between single-family homes. So what's proposed here is a little greater separation than, that would be found in the single-family district. And we believe that the, and the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So to show you the spacing here, so you can see, there would be a 17-foot separation to the structure to the north, and 19 to the south. We did hear some concerns at the planning commission, in particular from the resident to the north, about spacing, and to address that concern, they have shifted the home four feet to the south, and I'll show that graphic in a minute. In regard to the variances, staff and the planning commission do support the side yard setbacks, the side yard setback variance, and the lot size. The practical difficulty is due to the small size of the lot and the narrow width. We are not supportive of that rear yard setback and the building coverage requirement, so we are recommending denial of that. However, the applicant has revised the plans, as I indicated, to meet both those requirements. And we believe that it's reasonable, again, consistent with that property to the north in terms of the density. So here is a look at the submittal from this afternoon. They've made the homes a little bit smaller, so they would comply with the 25% building coverage. They have shifted to meet this 35-foot setback. Note the, initially, they were requesting a 7-foot setback for the West Villa, it's now at 11 feet, and to the north, they are in compliance with the 30-foot setback.
You mean to the east?
To the east, correct, yes. So, and we don't believe that the variance would alter the essential character of the district. Again, the homes will be located somewhat similar to the homes to the north. We did receive a lot of feedback on Better Together, concerned from the residential single-family district to the west, and you'll hear from some of those folks this evening, have some concerns about just the view shed up along the, mainly concerned with that home behind a house in that 35-foot setback. But again, staff and the planning commission are comfortable with that 35-foot setback. In an R1 district, a 25-foot rear yard setback is typical, so this is actually setback a little bit further than a single-family home would be. So with that, again, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of the rezoning and the, and the variances that we mentioned. So we would recommend that you, again, close the public hearing on October 11th and continue your decision to October 19th. With that, I can stand for questions.
Questions for Director Teague at this point in time? Anyone? Okay, good. Thanks for that thorough presentation. I know we're going to, before we hear from interested residents, we're going to hear from the developers, Jeff Zebarth of Perkins &amp; Wills will be the architect, and then Dave Remick from City Homes. And I understand, Director Teague, you've told them they've got about 15 minutes to make a presentation to the council, so. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for your time, Mayor and council, and Carrie, thank you for your time. We had talked about this project.
Why don't you give us your name and address?
Jeff Zebarth, 2903 Westwood Road, Wayzata. We had talked about this project back in May with the preliminary review of the concept, and there was a lot of support of that. The purpose of the development is really to provide an alternative housing product for Edina, and we felt that that was well received. We've continued to develop those plans. We did change the plans a little bit to become a little bit more user-friendly. The initial concept that we showed had multiple stairs, and so we've tried to simplify that. We've reduced the size of the homes, related to some of the comments that we had at the last planning commission meeting. And then, as Carrie has mentioned, we did spend a fair amount of time making the adjustments to the plan to acknowledge the 35-foot setbacks on the rear, the 30-foot setback, and then there were a number of engineering comments that we've also addressed in our revised plan. So we believe we are doing all that we can to adhere to some of the guidelines and responses that we've had from the city and the planning commission, and we feel comfortable with where we are in the process right now.
All right. Questions for Mr. Zebarth? So Mr. Zebarth, what, what is it that you need with respect to, in addition to the rezoning, what do you need from a variance standpoint, based on the fact that you revised these plans?
I believe the two variances that we're requesting are for the lot size, and then the variance from a 20-foot side yard setback to 7 and 15, I believe. All other variances are being adhered to, or setbacks are being adhered to.
So you originally had four variance requests, and now we're down to two?
That's correct.
Director Teague, you want to?
That is correct, yes.
They've now got the building coverage variance requirement satisfied, they wanted to be at 26.3%, now they're at 25?
That's correct.
Which is consistent with the code.
Right.
And then the rear yard setback went to 35 feet, which is consistent with the code. So we're left with lot size variance at 7,300 square feet to 5,016 square feet, and then the side yard setback issue that you articulated?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, good, just so we understand. All right, we've got other questions from council members, from Mr. Zebarth at this point in time? Otherwise, I'm going to open this up for public testimony, so the public hearing is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to come forward and address the council with regard to this matter, remember from Director Bennerott's instructions, you'll have three minutes, and you, if you have anything you want to present from an overhead standpoint, we will give you a portable microphone, and you can use the center console, otherwise, I'd suggest using one of the side podiums. Give us a, you give us your name and address, and then you'll have a yellow, you'll get a green light to get going on your three minutes, so you get a yellow light when you've got 30 seconds left, and then we need to have you wrap up right around the time the red light hits.
Okay.
Thank you. Just bear with us this moment here.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll get you all set up.
I'm Scott Fishman, 4613. 13 Meadow Road. Thank you, Mayor Hovland, and council members, and Mr. Teague. My address at 4613, right here, sits behind the 4630 France Avenue.
Hold on, it's just coming up now.
Can you see?
Okay, we got it.
Everybody?
Yep. Would you put, put the cursor on your property?
My apologies?
Yeah.
Will you put the cursor on your property?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I live right here, off of Meadow Road.
All right.
Okay, and our backyard is the 4630 France. This is the existing structure that'll be torn down. I've taken a line on this plat map, this curvy line goes along the rear setbacks of the existing dwellings, and you can see that it forms, with the exception of a garage there, it's not a dwelling. We have this beautiful and expansive and quiet, deep backyard zone with beautiful sightlines, and the original proposal was to have an east house and a west house, this one setback 20 foot, right smack in the middle of that backyard zone. It would, I mean, literally destroy the sightlines of all the neighbors up and down France Avenue. I mean, I honestly think any reasonable person looking at this would think, you know, what the heck is that west house doing there, smack squarely in the backyard? The proposed plan now, this house would be shifted south, I guess, four or five feet, right, sets it back the, to code 35 feet, but as you can see, what we have defined here is this backyard zone with these beautiful sightlines, right, is still intruded upon completely by this west house. If the developers were to just take that west house and move it so it was attached to the east house, we'd have effectively a twin home, the square footages would be the same, its setback would line up with the other multifamily townhome dwellings to the north, and the homes and duplexes to the south, their sightlines would not be as interrupted. And this would also conform to the Edina Comprehensive Plan guidelines for attached multifamily homes on this block of France Avenue. So we're basically talking about taking that west house, my house is down here, all right, and shifting it over, smushing it with the east house, so the garages are kissing. If you looked at the sketch plan, the original one is here, right, we took this, we take this west house, smush it up against the east house, this is what we'd end up with, shorter driveway, less concrete, and a beautiful yard, and the sightlines, for the most part, maintained. A twin home with attached garages might look something like this. France Avenue would be this away to the right, the backyard to the left, the south driveway would provide side entry access to the garages. And again, in addition to the zoning objectives, to have an aesthetic project done, right, which would take into account the sensibilities of the neighbors, it would be more in tune with the comprehensive plan, which calls for attached dwellings in this block of France Avenue. So it asks you to vote no to approve this project, and then to work with the neighbors and the builders to come up with a plan that the neighbors can get behind and feel happy about.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fishman.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming in this evening.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Laura Westland, the homeowner of 4626 France, just to the north of the proposed development. As you can see from Scott's graphic, we have beautiful backyard space between 46th and 47th Streets for both the France Avenue lots and the Meadow Road lots. The new west villa that is proposed for the back of the lot at 4630 disrupts this backyard zone that we have established for the residents of these two streets on this block. We all use our backyard spaces in multiple ways, we have patios and decks, and from my perspective at 4626, the west villa at the back of the lot is really my next-door neighbor building a house in the backyard. The zoning that's being proposed for 4630 would change it from a single-family home to the PRD2 that we have at the White Oaks Townhome Association next door. But is, what is significantly different is the proposed construction at 4630. My neighbor at 4624 and I share a structure, we share a common wall, we share a driveway, we share water and sewer systems for our home. And again, my west wall, the furthest my home at 4626 goes west, is in align with the other homes on France on this block. What is being proposed for 4630 are two single-family separate homes, separate water, separate sewer on the current lot for 4630. These are two separate homes, and again, the west villa extends significantly deeper into the lot than any other dwelling on that block. At the planning commission meeting on September 22nd, a comment was made that it's always challenging and frustrating when someone builds on a vacant lot next to you, and I want to emphasize that 4630 is not a vacant lot. Right now, there is a current home on it, it is uninhabitable, it has been abandoned for, I believe, about 20 years. We all welcome new construction to replace that home in the lot. The backyard is not a vacant lot, it's a backyard, and that is what we oppose, the construction of the west villa, the second home on this lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westland.
Good evening, all. My name is Catherine Winston. I live at 4634 France Avenue South, directly south of this lot. Imagine with me, you wake up tomorrow, and next door to you, the lot has been cleared, and two houses the size of yours are being built, front to back, on a lot which is the same size as yours, 210 feet by 48 feet. Now, I would like to review with you what I did on my lot. 12 years ago, I was fortunate enough to find a house that had been on the market for nine months. The previous owner, a single woman such as myself, had made wonderful enhancements to the house. She had restuccoed the exterior, replaced all the windows with Marvin products, remodeled the kitchen, and had even put in central air. It was mine for $319,000. The first thing I did was I hired a contractor to fence in the backyard for my rather large German Shepherd. The contractor followed the law governing fence installation, one foot inside the property line, no higher than six feet, done. The next year, I decided I needed to make the house more family-friendly and more aging-in-place friendly. There was no room to put a bathroom on the first floor, not even a teeny tiny one. So again, I hired a designer who consulted with the city of Edina as to what was allowed and what permits were required. With the length of the house only needing to be extended eight feet farther, a new two-car garage at the basement level replaced the single-car garage, while a family room, laundry facility, and a full-size bathroom were added above on the main level. The new footprint matched my The new footprint matched my neighbors to the south in length and did not extend past my neighbor's garage to the north. I have spent the last nine years landscaping the front and backyards. This spring, I added a 10-by-10-foot deck in the backyard, following city guidelines so that I could enjoy the vistas and the fruits of my labor. My point? Edina has stipulated that projects should adhere to the neighborhood guidelines, and my neighbors and I have done that. The area between 46th and 47th Streets have been designated low-density and attached residential. As that is what has been set forth, then so be it. Guidelines must not be set, only to be set aside, to the detriment of the established neighborhood. My neighbors and I have enjoyed many years of lovely views and a wonderful sense of privacy. We are also very aware that change is a-coming. We support the concept of twin homes or duplex, which would maintain the long-established sightlines of everyone's backyard. It would be an unspeakable tragedy to drop a second house in that backyard. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Winston.
Hi, my name is Heather Isaacz. I live at 4640 France Avenue South. So my husband and I are owners of one of the three duplexes that are featured on the plat. So like our neighbors that have spoken very eloquently, we certainly support a better development than the vacant house, abandoned house that is currently there. And we would be very much in support of Scott's idea of the pull-together, the twin home, which I think would be more in character. Our home is currently 2,500 square feet, at two stories, and we have ourselves, and when we have renters, we have a number of people, about four people living in there very comfortably. So I see certainly there could be a similar type of building, and we would be completely supportive. And it would, again, fit the neighbors, bring that housing in, hopefully affordable as well with that. So that's what I would like to share.
Thank you, Ms. Isaacz.
Good evening, Mayor Hovland and the council members. My name is Steve Brown. I live at 5528 Halifax Lane. I'm here this evening to speak in support of this project. I'm here tonight because I had the privilege of serving on the city's Housing Strategy Task Force. And in doing so, learned firsthand about the city's need and desire to build a more diversified community. In our final report, we noted there were three guiding principles. One of them was to support the development of a wide range of housing options to meet the diverse needs and preferences of the existing and future Edina community. From our principles, we derived four goals, the first two of which were to promote lifecycle housing and to enable diverse housing stock. This project directly addresses both those goals. This project is targeted to seniors who are downsizing but who want to remain in the community. It's worth noting that by enabling this move, this project also makes available a single-family home, which can be purchased by a new family. And in many cases, the new family was likely to have kids who will participate in the Edina school system. The Housing Strategy Task Force was very concerned about striking the right balance between supporting growth while also preserving the essential character of Edina. We concluded that the city's comprehensive plan achieved this balance by identifying the specific areas where growth should be encouraged. The proposed project is an area that was identified as one to be guided for additional density. The proposed project is in an area that was, I'm sorry, specifically, this project is on land guided by the comprehensive plan to move from R1 to low-density attached residential. This is the designation that supports the level of density being proposed in this project. As Stephanie Hawkinson noted in her letter of support for this project, the Housing Strategy Task Force also recommended upzoning or increasing the density along transit corridors. This land is along a major transit corridor. In fact, Metro Transit has just approved and fully funded, putting a new bus rapid transit line, or BRT line, the Line E, along France Avenue. So it's a very good location for additional density. For all these reasons, this project is exactly the type of project that the Housing Strategy Task Force recommended that the city support. By replacing one home with two homes, it addresses the clearly identified need to increase the amount of housing units in Edina. I'm very pleased with the approach that the neighbors have taken of coming up with some very creative ways to make or propose a project that could make this continue to have higher density, but maybe be more appropriately designed. I don't know, however, that the developer is going to be able to make that financially viable. So that remains to be seen. But I think by approving this type of project on land guided by the comprehensive plan for this type of development, we are making progress toward achieving our housing goals, and while honoring the commitment to build very specific, limited areas of the city. I urge you to support this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mayor Hovland, members of the council, before we move on to our next speaker, I just want to give that number for anyone who'd like to call in. That number is 1-800-374-0221. You'll be asked to give a conference ID. Tonight's conference ID is 717-6364. Once you connect, you'll need to give the operator your name, street address, and telephone number. And then when you're ready to speak, you'll press star, the asterisk symbol, then the number one on your telephone keypad. That will get you into the queue to speak after those in the room have spoken. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bennerott. That's good advice for folks. We continue to have some of our residents testifying live, and we've got one of our residents already now who potentially has some handouts, but at least some material that she wants to reference. Good evening.
Good evening, Roberta Costalano, 4854 France Avenue South. I feel that there are several problems with the development as proposed. When I looked at Carrie's, let's see, Jennifer, can you call up the, oh, you've got it. I'm seeing something totally different here.
Sound the screen.
Okay, Carrie's compliance table, and saw the front yard setback on France Avenue at 30 feet for the PRD-2 zoning. And I thought right away, that's not appropriate. I live on France Avenue. I went up and measured some of the homes.
Did you give us your name and address? I think we forgot to.
Didn't I do that?
Did you?
I can do it again if you want. Roberta Costalano, 4854 France Avenue South.
All right, thanks. I might have missed it.
And so I went up on 46th Street, and I took a laser, and it was a really rough measure because I probably wasn't right to the sidewalk, but I was getting measurements of like 47 feet deep. And so what I'm looking at here is by the choice of the PRD-2 zoning, that the city is interested in reducing the building setback to France Avenue, which I think is totally out of line, and I think it's sneaky, and I think it fits other things that the city's been doing with regard to setbacks. So what I did then, just as Mr. Fishman, I looked at the comprehensive plan, which calls for low-density attached residential. The developer is proposing detached units, completely changing, you know, the lot structures. And so detached units are not compliant with the ComPlan guidance. And that matters because you are required by state statute to, if you request a rezoning, it's required to comply with the comprehensive plan guidance. So you're out of line with that. So a better, more appropriate zoning would be R2. I find I don't breathe when I'm trying to talk fast. R2, which would be attached units. And with the attached units, you would have interior side yard setback of 10 feet, rear yard setback of 35 feet. But for the front street, it's 30 feet but conditional, and you go to subsection 36 of the zoning, 364391, and where I think you're all familiar with it for single-family homes, where you look at the setbacks of the homes all along the area, and you take, you know, the average setback. And so here's the special requirements section. And so that would get you, you know, you're not only looking at more consistent on the backside, you're also maintaining the character of the neighborhood on the front side on France Avenue. And there's nothing inconsistent with having a good setback on France Avenue and having transit, you know? As a matter of fact, it's needed. This is a copy of the zoning. There are numerous R2 in the area, including several on France Avenue that are attached and separately owned, two-unit attached dwellings. And then I am just going to throw in here the planned residential district, PRD, the double-dwelling unit. And I have a question from Carrie regarding, where does that 7,300 square feet come from in the compliance table? But I think PRD-2 is out of line, so.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Costalano.
Thank you, Director.
Good evening, Mayor Hovland. My name is Maureen Malais-Smith, and I live at 4820 Towns Road. And it's around this proposed, the proposed changes are around the corner from where I live. And I walk past this building, this empty building every day. And I really think that Mr. Fishman's idea of making it an attached duplex that reflects the other family dwellings to the north would be wonderful, and especially if it would preserve the backyards of all the people there on France and on Meadow Road. I think it would be welcomed. There are many duplexes on 49th Street near where I live, and they're very appreciated. And I think a new dwelling, a duplex-style dwelling where a wall is shared and a driveway adjoining garages would be much appreciated. And so going along with Mr. Fishman's idea would be excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Other folks in the audience wish to testify? Provide their thoughts to the council? All right, let's go to the, Director Bennerott, see if you've got anybody waiting to speak to us online.
At this moment, we still have no one calling in. Because I made that announcement more than a minute ago, though, I think it's safe for you to move on with your agenda.
All right. Anyone have questions while we're waiting? Yes, Councilmember Staunton?
I have a question for Mr. Zebarth, if he could come up. So having heard all that testimony, it's a pretty simple question. Why can't you put the two houses together?
Because a duplex and a backup from a garage, there's not enough room to back up out of the garage, turn around and get out of the driveway. It technically cannot work. It's really simple. It's a math, it's a math problem.
So you need the whole width of the lot?
You need more, yeah, you need more depth to back out of a garage, turn around, and drive out of the driveway. So we had looked at, we'd looked at this property, multiple ways of how to get a different product on the property, and that's one that just technically did not work.
Okay, thank you.
Hang in here, there, Mr. Zebarth. Come on back, please. So I'll call it the Fishman notion, or the Fishman idea. His idea was you had two houses, and it looked like they had garages facing each other.
Correct.
And you'd basically have to back towards the other person's garage and then go out.
Correct.
Fishman idea is that you contract those two, and so the garages are here, and now you swing out, if you're the west property, you swing out and go forward, or if you're the east property, you could swing back to the west and then go out. So what's the math problem?
You can't, the distance of backing out of a garage and being able to turn cannot be accomplished in basically 18 feet.
Member Pierce?
Can we see that on the, can you just illustrate with the drawing?
Director Teague, can you put up the site plan? Thanks, Member Pierce. That's a better way to talk about the issue.
So we have a, well, here's a 11, we put a seven-foot setback, the garage is, actually. So there's a seven, is this on? There's a seven-foot setback side yard. A garage is 22 feet deep, so that's 29 feet. The lot's 48 feet, so that leaves 19 feet to back out and turn. A car, an average car is about 16 foot, six or 17 foot long, so there's not room to back your car out and turn. The turning radius on a car is roughly 24 feet. As a matter of fact, this maneuver is about the tightest it could be to actually turn into these two garages with both, with two cars. That's something that we studied a lot.
So the notion is that you, if you're in the east villa or the west villa, you back out or you drive back, say you back out, you back up into what you've got labeled auto court, and then you go forward?
Yeah, so if you put this unit next to this unit, the backout space is here, and it's basically only 19 feet deep all the way to the property line. There's not enough room to back a car out, turn, and then go down the driveway. Technically cannot work. It's something that we looked at.
Okay. Member Pierce, go ahead.
Yep, so that's helpful. So I want to state that a little differently. So if I were the homeowner, and you were my developer, and I brought this idea to you, you would say to me, that's not possible.
Correct. You know, the other thing I think that hasn't been talked about, but if this is not done or proposed with two units, a single-family home could be put on this property 25 feet off this rear property line, which is the guideline for R1. The footprint between this home and this home is roughly 2,500 square feet. We all know that there's a lot of larger homes being built on small lots in Edina. It's not uncommon, this could be nearly a 5,000-square-foot house, two stories tall, basically the same footprint of these combined all the way back to 25 feet.
What's the front yard setback on R1 for France Avenue? Director Teague?
For this particular lot, they would need to match the single-family home to the south.
Okay. So to the point Ms. Costalano was raising?
Correct.
Yeah. But under PRD-2, it's 30 feet.
That's right.
Which is what they've done. Yeah, so that was a question I was going to ask Director Teague, was if you tore this house down and somebody came along and said, I want you to build me a really modern house that's 6,000 square feet, and it's okay with me if it's long and skinny, they could go all the way to the 25-foot line for a rear yard setback?
That's exactly right. And if I were to do it, I would want, I would want my house further off France Avenue than I would on France Avenue. I mean, we all know there's multiple ways you can look at this. I mean, we all know there's multiple ways you can look at this opportunity and this is, this is the approach that we thought was most appropriate.
Yeah, that's an interesting comment because, you know, when you, when Mr. Fishman was talking about his idea, you couldn't help but think about the side-by-sides that are over on 49th.
Yep.
There's some beautiful homes over there that are twin homes essentially.
Yep, I've driven by them.
That are attached and seem to work well.
Yep. I would agree, just that this, this property does not have the luxury of that size of lot.
Other questions? Councilmember Staunton? Councilmember Pierce? All right, do we have anybody calling in? Director Benarot?
No.
All right, all right. Thanks for all the input, folks. Lots to think about here. Is there a motion to close the public hearing on this matter at noon on October 11th and continue action to the October 19 city council meeting?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Anderson, to close the public hearing on this matter at noon on October 11th and continue action to the October 19 city council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you for coming in, folks. The next matter is another matter that Director Teague has, and this is a site plan review with some requested variances for 6,500 Berry Road. Now we are switching to a commercial use from a residential use?
Yes, thank you.
From, from a residential use to a proposed commercial use, excuse me.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this property is located up in the Southdale District, more into the Medical District, just east of Southdale Fairview Hospital, intersection of 65th and Berry Road. You can see the site here, surrounded by a large parking lot that's actually goes with the property to the south. The site is Zone Plan to Office District. It's guided in our comprehensive plan within the regional medical district. This is an area of town where more height is anticipated. The red area indicates a maximum of 12 stories. So the site today exists with this just over 16,000 square foot medical office. Note, some of the parking is underneath the building. The applicant is proposing to tear that structure down and build a slightly larger 24,000 square foot medical office and surgery center. This is a look at the original proposal. And again, on this project, they've made a number of changes from the planning commission meeting, and it also goes along with some of the recommendations of Mick Johnson from Architecture Field Office. The specific request is a site plan review, front setback variance from 30 feet to 18 feet on the north line, from the north property line. Or excuse, in the Southdale District, we actually measure setbacks to the curb and not the lot line. Side yard setback variance from 20 feet to 10 feet, a building coverage variance, floor ratio variance, and a parking stall variance. So here's a look again at the original proposal. They had access off of 65th as well as access off of Berry Road. There are two levels of parking. Each access for the parking access is a different level within the project. And note that the main entrance is, originally was proposed at the south end of the, of the building. This is just a quick look at the required setbacks. Again, they're shifting the building to the north mainly so they can make this turn into the garage as it goes down into the site. The building would be made of brick and stone with architecture metal panels as accents. Again, another look at the building. So primary issue that we considered with the planning commission is the proposal reasonable to justify all the variances that are requested. Staff and the planning commission believe that they are justified. Again, the planning commission recommendation is for approval. Wenk did a parking study. Ed Terhar is with us this evening. He's on the call, should there be any questions. But the parking study did demonstrate that there would be adequate parking to support the project. That's at 73 parking stalls. With the revisions that I'm about to show you, they did have to reduce the parking by one stall, so it's 72. We believe that the setbacks are reasonable. The practical difficulty here is again, a very narrow and small lot. The proposed building is only slightly larger than what's out there today. Again, this is the narrowest lot within this district. The lot to the south is narrow, but it's also attached to the larger office building. We don't believe that the variance would alter the essential character of the district. There's a variety of building sizes and heights within this neighborhood. This building, despite the setbacks close to the side lot lines, appears to be larger because of the large surface parking all around the site. And the proposed sidewalks would be a big improvement in the area. So you can see there's a variety of building heights. There's a taller building to the north, the residential apartments. So again, the planning commission recommended approval, subject where they added three conditions that the applicant has already demonstrated that they, well, one, that they're okay with those changes, and they've demonstrated how it would be accommodated. So first, they suggested that the entrance off 65th be eliminated. It should just be off of Berry Road. And that the main entrance be relocated to the corner at 65th Street. 65th Street eventually is to be a through street that would connect all the way with York, more of a prominent street in the future. So the thinking of having that, a more predominant corner goes along with that improved, future improvement to 65th Street. They also suggested that the sidewalk be extended all the way to the lot line and the tree shifted to the south. So the applicant has revised the plans. They were included in the packet. I'll just quickly demonstrate that they have relocated the entrance to the corner. The garage is eliminated and the patio is out here. So you can see the patio on the corner. The sidewalk continued. And the way they've accomplished that is both entrances to the upper and lower levels of the garage would, would be accomplished off of Berry Road. So that south entrance, right here, and a little bit to the north would serve that main level. We didn't receive a lot of comments on Better Together, some concern about landscaping. We also had a resident that testified at planning commission that had some concerns about that garage entrance on 65th, so the changes would address that issue. But again, planning commission and staff are recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the approval resolution. But with that, we would recommend that you close the public hearing for October 11th and continue action to October 19th. And I can stand for questions.
Questions for Director Teague at this point in time? Anyone on the council? All right, thanks, Director Teague. Standby. And we have Don Rolfe from Polp Architects with us?
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Rolfe. And go ahead and make your presentation. I think Director Teague has indicated to me that you may take up to 15 minutes. We'll certainly give you that latitude if you think it's necessary.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Thank you again for the time. We did speak during the site sketch process virtually, so it's good to see you guys in person. As Director Teague mentioned, we, we did make some adjustments based on the planning commission's recommendations, and Director Teague did review those. Do you guys have any questions for us at this point?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry, Don Rolfe, 14260 131st Street North in Stillwater.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that, Member Jackson. Why don't you go ahead and tell us about these changes you made?
Well, right, so if you don't mind, I will. So as, as Director Teague mentioned, we, we did adjust the, the entrance of 65th down to the south off of Berry. And to do that, we did have to adjust the entrance going into the lower level. We had to push that over to the west, and that's where we, we lost some parking to do that. But we, we've got the two entrances adjacent to each other. There will be a concrete retaining wall between them because of the, the difference in, in height at the, at those points. We did move the entrance to the north. You know, we, we felt the entrance to the south was a better scenario just based on the, the long view of that elevation and, and the corner of 65th and Berry. You know, there could be some congestion at times with, with an entrance right at the corner, so we, we had it down to the south farther just to alleviate that. But again, we, we are showing that, that, that can't work. And we are, as, as you can see, we, we've got all the parking.
Would you, Mr. Rolfe, would you talk a little bit more about that main entrance issue? Why, why you preferred having it where you have it on Berry Road as opposed to up on the corner? Is that what you're, is that what you were saying?
Well, down in the south, right. I mean, just, just to relieve any pressure of activity at the corner. I mean, the, the intent is for, for staff to, to come in and park at the lower level and for public and patients to park at the main level. But if there is some, some drop-off at the street level or, or pickup, that would occur potentially, you know, at, at the main entrance. There, there will be some pickup at the secondary entrance after, after surgery, but, I mean, there could be some more activity up, up at the main entrance. So that, again, that was one of our concerns, so we, we thought we would move it to the south and relieve that, that issue.
Okay.
And I was gonna mention too that, you know, compared to the current site, which is a lot of pavement and parking, you know, at the building, facing under the building, we have located the parking within the building for, for itself, which allowed us to provide more green space and, and more landscaping. So we are reducing the, the amount of impervious on the site that's currently there.
Questions for Mr. Rolfe? All right, thank you. Standby, we may, we may have some, just like we did in the last matter. I'm gonna open this up now for public testimony. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to testify regarding this proposal involving 6,500 Berry Road in Edina, we're pleased to take your testimony. Yes, ma'am? Good evening.
Hello. I was at the other meeting too. My name is Lynn Schmitz. I live at 6483 Berry Road. And I do appreciate that you did remove that entrance on 65th Street because of the apartment building across the street. Cars going in and out would, you know, could be affecting the people that live in that building, so I do appreciate that. But I had a question for the gentleman over here, Mr. Teague. You were saying something about 65th Street going from where to where? Because right now, 65th Street does not go past Berry Road because it ends up in the Colony of Edina's residential parking.
Yeah, so that's your, your question is, yeah, we, we can deal with that when we get done here, but I, I think there's a plan at least that we would eventually have 65th Street run all the way to Xerxes.
I don't know how you can.
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to acquire buildings on Xerxes, like the audiologist, but there's, there's a plan to get that road through.
Okay, but, okay, and I don't, like I say, I don't know how you could do that because you just had a new construction that went up that has parking behind it. You have a daycare center there. They have their own parking lot. So at this point, I don't know how you would get anything to go all the way through up to, up to Xerxes.
Yeah, okay. So is there anything else you wanted to share with the council?
No, that's basically it.
Okay.
But I do appreciate the changes that you made. I think they'll be very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, for coming in.
This might be a good time to remind our at-home listening audience that if you would like to call in, the, the number to call is 1-800-374-0221. Please use the conference ID 7176364. After connecting, you'll be asked to give your name, street address, and telephone number. And then when you'd like to speak, please press star or the asterisk symbol, then the number one on your telephone keypad.
All right, thank you, Ms., Director Benarot. Anyone else in the audience wish to testify regarding this matter? Okay. Not seeing anybody coming forward, not hearing anything. We have anybody online? All right. Anybody have any questions for Director Teague? Director Teague, what, what, we, we know the planning commission position on some of these issues that you talked about and Mr. Rolfe talked about. What's the staff position on the relocation of the main entrance?
Yes, staff would support these changes as well. I think it addresses the neighborhood concerns, and if it, it works well for them circulation-wise, staff would support them as well.
All right, thank you. It caused anybody on the council to want to ask a question? All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing on this matter involving Resolution 2021-89, which is the 6,500 Berry Road matter, at noon on October 11th and continue the action to the October 19 city council meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Member Staunton?
Second.
Motion by, second by Member Pierce. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, we're on to the next matter, which now takes us to a proposed neighborhood roadway reconstruction special assessment. And Chad Milner, our director of engineering, has this matter.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're here to discuss the final assessment hearing for the 58th Street project from 2020, embodied in improvement number BA 456. So we did, this is the location map, so recall, the project started at Wooddale Avenue on the west and went through Xerxes Avenue on the east. We did have one objection letter that we've received up till this evening from 5733 Beard. We have given instructions to that owner if they wanted to continue that objection at the district court. I just wanted to note the, if you recall, the public engagement process, this was a heavy, heavy public engagement process to get to the final design. We had some issues with the France Avenue traffic signal. And we also have some turf issues that we'll talk about. So those are kind of three points just to remember for the project. But as I typically do before street projects, and the reason we only had one project this year is because we got a petition to do Melody Lake in two, instead of two years, in one year. So it's a big project going on this year. So we really only have one neighborhood project, street project for you to consider this evening. So typically, I do the post-construction survey results. So I'll do that for 58th Street in the next few slides. So we sent out 73 surveys and we had 17 respondents, so about a 23% response rate. The files are right in the middle of the response rates here. You can see over the years that we've done the post-construction survey. And then I'll just go through some questions that we've asked the residents that were part of that project. And then we have the results from this year and 2020. And then the table shows some of the historical results, just so you can see some of those numbers. And the graph is always related to the 2020 or the current results. So one question was how effective was the communication you received prior to construction? And you can see meetings, letters, and website, and the website was the highest at 54%, pretty much in line with other years. How effective was the communication you received during construction? And here we had letters, we had Better Together updates and City Extras, door notices and text messages. And you can see, again, those numbers are, are near that 50% and the text messages actually were higher this year at 62%. Then you can see the other historical data there from the survey results. And all the survey comments and full results are in your packet if you wanted to review those.
What do you attribute that drop to? I mean, it was just, 2018, you had just, I mean, you're kind of the pinnacle, 2016, the pinnacle of your communication effectiveness. Now you've had more tools available to you over time, and then 2020... And then 2020, you got a significant reduction over 2019 in people's thoughts about how effective our communication is. What do you, what are your, what are you learning from all of this? What do you, because I know you make a terrific effort at communicating, but what's what's causing people to think that they're not being communicated well, with well?
Yes, Mayor, that's a great question. I'm concerned that we only have 17 people. So if only two or three don't feel we're doing a good job, it skews those results quite a bit. Usually, we have up to 100 people responding. So I'm a little concerned with the amount of data that we have. But I think this project definitely had some issues, and people maybe felt like the turf wasn't being done fast enough, and we had those traffic signal issues. So maybe the speed of our response wasn't what they expected or wanted, and that would reflect whether the communication was effective, if they weren't getting those immediate results. So we always ask if they understand how the projects are funded, you know, split between assessments and city utility funds. This year, 53% understood that. How effective was the project team in understanding your specific construction-related issue? This goes, again, to the comments I just made about the turf, because everybody was talking about that this year with the drought conditions and how poorly it came in. So we were at 51%, which was the low in those last six years of survey results. So aside from construction, during construction, aside from the unexpected conditions, such as weather-related delays, did we give you enough notice? So those notices are water, water shut-offs when we do the water main work, driveway access when we pour concretes, roadway access and parking. And here they are, they felt like they were getting that notice that they needed in their everyday, getting in and out of their driveways and using water and that sort of thing. So very good results on those day-to-day type things.
Yeah, hold that on the screen there. This almost seems inconsistent with what you saw before. I mean, here, they're asking, you're asking specific questions about communication during construction on water shut-off, driveway access, and people are really pretty satisfied. But the general overall impression that you get is that only about half the people that responded to the survey thought you did a good job communicating. So I understand your concern about the low number of respondents, but it's getting a real mixed message out of this, and I'm sure you're trying to figure it out, too, because you want to be the best communicator you can be from a departmental standpoint and a personal standpoint, so.
Exactly, Mayor. We see these kind of discrepancies. These, I feel, are the black and white things. Water's off tomorrow, they know it, we've communicated it. My grass looks bad. Give us time, we're going to work with the contractor. And it's 30 days later, and it's still not looking good. And I think that's where that discrepancy is. These are really black and white issues versus maybe those longer-term ones. And then we asked for some suggestions, you know, do you have any suggestions for improvement? More notice, crews were good, techs worked well, make more of an effort to reach out, more mailed correspondence? Any suggestions for our process, our overall street reconstruction process? And landscaping is noted in here a lot. The turf is noted about being unacceptable. You know, please do not use the cheapest bid, although we kind of have to for the most part. Is there anything else related to the project we should stop doing? Continue to work with the residents? Someone didn't like the mulch and the plants? And find a different landscape company. So again, that turf issue keeps coming up. Anything we should keep doing? We watered it well, but the drought conditions just didn't help. Tree replacement, you know, we do that one-for-one replacement, so they like that. And then hire people that care about the residents. Then any overall general comments related to the project? And again, that turf issue comes up. Someone was disappointed with that final design. Recall, we have sidewalks on both sides, and we had lots and lots of discussions about what was going to be designed. And a few other comments there. And again, all the comments are in your packet if you care to read through those. So with that, I'll get into the assessment part of the project. So again, we had some issues with the France Avenue traffic signal, and we've discussed this here. We are not assessing for any rework associated with that signal. We are paying that out of our state aid dollars. The turf establishment, there are some things that made it not as, even potentially as successful as it could be. They planted it late in the fall of 2020. We had this huge drought this year, so trying to get stuff established. They came back late. They could have came back early spring, they came back early summer, and by then, it was almost too late. So we've relieved this specific turf contractor of his duties, and we have somebody else that's coming in and has actually already started. So that person's going to continue working a little bit this fall, but more of that work right away in the spring to rectify this turf issue. And again, no costs associated with the rework are being assessed here this evening. And then for future turf, this continues to be an issue we've talked about here for many years. So we're currently reviewing specifications, we're calling other agencies to see what they're doing and what's working well. We are going to host a contractor meeting to see what contractors suggest. And then we're also looking at maybe a qualifications-based contract, where we could bring in a specific vendor that meets certain qualifications and hire that to do a restoration outside of the regular street contract.
I think that's what Member Sutton had suggested some time ago, because this isn't the first time we've had people dissatisfied with the landscaping. Maybe we hire somebody that knows exactly what they're doing and does a good job and cares about the work they do, and they do all of our projects.
Yep, and we did that one year, and the results were pretty much the same as when we did it all at once, and we found that staff had more administrative time to do it. And we said, well, if if they're going to be the same, then why have staff, more staff time? But again, we're seeing the issue. We want to see if we can get somebody that's qualified and bring them in long term, so they start to build that understanding and and replace that turf to our standards. So getting into the costs and the assessment amounts, here's a cost table. The approximate numbers for the street was 53%. And then the associated utility numbers, and then the PACS fund came right in where our engineering report thought 6.1 million, and the final contract was 6.2 million. The assessable portion of those costs, so the street portion, is $361,129.65. So that comes to an assessable rate per equivalent unit of $9,653.29. We estimated $9,900 in front of the council in December of 2019. So this is a 2.5% decrease in what we thought the project would cost then. So I'm recommending you continue the public hearing until October 11th and consider approval at your next council meeting on October 19th. I stand for any questions.
Good, thank you, Director Milner. Questions for Director Milner on this project? Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, thank you for paying attention to the landscaping, because certainly the comments were overwhelming on that. So thank you.
All right, I'm going to open this up for public testimony. This is a public hearing matter. We're going to, so we've still got some folks in the audience that have a concern about something either in this matter or one yet to come. So if there's anyone who wishes to come forward and testify with regard to the proposed special assessments involving what we call improvement, BA 456, which is the West 58th Street Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project, feel free to come forward. I don't see anybody coming forward to testify that's in the audience at City Hall. Do we have anybody online, Director Benarott?
No, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing on this matter involving the West 58th Street Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Improvement Matter at noon on October 11th and continue the action to the October 19 city council meeting?
So moved.
Got a motion from Member Anderson, second from Member Pierce to continue this matter for, close the public hearing at noon on October 11th and continue the action to the October 19 city council meeting on the West 58th Street Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And then we are on to Tom Swenson, our Assistant Director of Parks and Natural Resources, has got three matters in a row. And the first one is a proposed weed mowing special assessment.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So I'm here for weed mowing assessments. The city code states that weeds should be controlled and can't exceed the height of 10 inches in a, in height at any time. And noxious weeds, as defined by the State Commissioner of Agriculture, shall be eradicated. When weeds or grass exceeds 10-inch in height, the weed inspector reaches out to the property owner. The owner has 10 days to comply. Park maintenance at that point will cut the weeds, and the properties assess the cost of labor and the equipment. We have 12 properties this year that fell in this assessment program. Here's the first five. And the second five. And the final two. And it should be noted that each property assessment includes a $30 administrative fee.
All right, any questions for Mr. Swenson? All right, this is a public hearing matter. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify regarding these proposed assessments for weed mowing to the properties indicated in the staff presentation? I don't hear anything in the audience or see anybody coming forward, anybody online?
No, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to continue, excuse me, motion to close the public hearing at noon on October 11th and continue the action regarding Resolution 2021-80, the weed mowing special assessments to the city council meeting on October 19, 2021?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce to to close the public hearing at noon on October 11th regarding the Resolution 2021-80, which is the proposed special assessment on weed mowing on the defined properties, and then continue the action to the October 19 city council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Director Swenson, go ahead to the next matter, which is the tree removal matter.
Yep, so up next is tree assessments. Again, the city code, tree inspector finds and controls the spread of diseased trees. We also have some clearance issues regarding roadways, heights over roadways and sidewalks. Another important piece of this is also public safety trees. Any of these issues that arise, we notify the homeowner with registered mail. They have 21 days to comply. Homeowners have the option to remove and dispose the trees on their own. Otherwise, the city will take care of it and assess the properties back. Seven properties did not contract it on their own, so the city forester hired that out. He secures quotes from private contractors, taking the low bid, and the cost varies greatly depending on the tree and its location. Staff does not do any removal on trees on private property. This breaks down how the assessments are spread out over different years, depending on the totals. So this is the full list for this year. The only, and again, there also is a $30 administrative fee. The final property is of interest, it was a significant tree, and the attorney for that property owner has reached out, Sharon, already objecting to this $12,000 fee.
So, I mean, that was an astounding, that's the largest assessment for removing a single tree that I've ever seen. I thought it was a typographical error, but what was the issue there, do you know?
City forester was nice enough to come along and answer specific questions on this this one, because we assumed it would be of interest to everybody.
Thank you for being here.
That specific tree there was a large dead oak tree in the rear yard of the property. The only way to get the tree out was with a 12-ton crane. No companies I contacted would send a climber up in the tree due to the condition of the tree, and so it had to be craned out. And when you have that, you know, half the price there was for the crane, the other half was for the removal of the tree.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Overhold? All right, any questions for Mr. Swenson? All right, this is a public hearing matter. I'm going to open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify regarding these proposed special assessments for tree removal at the designated properties? Yes, ma'am.
I am Dr. Vicky Thompson, a pediatrician, and I live at 7 Woodland Road, Edina. And I'm extremely busy, and I don't always attend everything going on in my house when I have a crisis going on, because I take care of every high-risk patient in the city. And we receive very little reimbursement for them. My partner, Dr. Rubin, and I, as pediatrics, is the lowest paid of all medical fields, and we probably have the most complicated patients. So I had, that was a double tree that was in my backyard. I had the part that was closest to my back boundary removed a couple of years ago, and that cost me $1,200. I had contacted them to come and take it down. This was last summer. And he goes, oh, I can't take it. He didn't come. So then I called him, and he goes, well, the only way I can take it down, I can't take it down in the winter because I have to take your fence down, and it'll be down all winter. And I have a golden retriever service dog, and I don't want my dog loose. So I said, no, you're going to have to come next summer. So they were planning to come this summer, and I came home from work one day, and I'm sure I was contacted, and I probably just paid no attention as I was probably was taking care of some complicated patients, and someone was taking a tree down in my yard. I said, what's going on here? And they said, oh, the, I said, who's paying you? They said, oh, the city council. So I said, oh. So that's all I heard about it. And I was planning to have it taken down, but I don't know how, you know, I'm never home, I work at my office all the time, but I'm available over there. And I've never been here before, and I've been in my house for 45 years. I love all my neighbors, except a couple of them, except for one, maybe. And so I guess $12,000 to me is a lot of money, okay? My practice has almost gone down during the pandemic. I take care of every complicated sick kid in the city of Edina. I've taken every nickel of my money to pay for these kids. I've gotten evicted from a space, I set up a new space because the parents went crazy. And so, and I've taken my social security money, which I live off of, and even put some of that into my business. So when I saw I had a $12,000 bill, I thought, wait a minute, I had a $1,200, $1,500 bid. What is going on here? And, you know, I would have given them access, and they couldn't take it down before because they had to take down the front part of my fence in the winter. They could have taken the fence down. And I don't understand how I can have to pay $12,000. And, you know, I used to have a lot of money, okay, to care for people, but it's all gone to the kids. So I am just basically hanging on to my practice for the kids that can't survive without me and my partner, Dr. Rubin. And I have worked every single day, I get home very late, but I feel like the kids have not had a chance to live. And I'm practically the only one that is willing to take care of them. I graduated number one on my med school class. I'm extremely gifted in managing these kids, as is Dr. Rubin. And so I did not let my practice go down. 50% of all urgent cares are down, and 30% of all medical practices. So I don't know what's going on here, and I just can't afford $12,000. So that's all I have to say. And I had bids for, I mean, whoever heard of $12,000 tree taken out? And, you know, nobody, you know, nobody called me, but I'm never home. If you want to talk to me, you have to either call me at the office or send me a letter. And sometimes I don't even read my mail because I dump it off at the secretary, because I get so preoccupied with my kids. So I just think it's absurd, when I had a bid for $1,200, $1,500 to take it out. So, and my house went into foreclosure a couple of days ago, and I'm sure I won't be there very long. So my kids go, why are you even going? I said, because I don't think it's right. And I can't afford to pay this money, I don't have the money. It's going to rob from my kids that I take care of. So I'm just asking you to reduce the assessment. So that's all.
All right, thank you, Doctor.
Yeah.
Would you come back up, Director Swenson, and maybe Mr. Overhold, and tell us a little bit about the notification that you provided to the homeowner at 7 Woodland Road? Or the efforts you made to reach out to them? Or the efforts you made to reach out to them?
Here's the notice I sent on June 4, 2020, for the removal of the tree in the backyard at 7 Woodland. I then went and got my three--
You gave her, you sent her a letter dated June 4, 2020, you sent it by certified mail?
Yep, I got--
And you're, as you're looking for that, you wrote the letter in June of 2020, and you gave her until January 21?
January 15 of 2021 to remove it. And then there's the, all my letters like this, I send certified.
I'm just going to tell you, it might have gotten signed by someone else, because I never saw the letter. And if I did, it loses the mail at the office.
Yeah, who did sign it? I was trying to see that myself.
There's not a signature on there.
I mean, I was trying to remove it myself, but I just couldn't get it done anymore because I had to take my fence down, and I didn't want the dog to see it.
So what else is on that receipt, Mr. Overhold? You got it back, but there's no sign that the, and it says sample in the middle of the page.
That was just, yeah, for, you know, my copy of it. But yeah, there isn't, there is no signature on it, but that's, you know, I sent it certified and--
So it came back to you from the post office, but nobody ever signed for it?
That would be correct.
I never saw that letter. So if I, I am so busy, and I have overlooked it or--
What, yeah, doctor, please.
And so I, you know, went there on the 15th, the tree was still standing.
So what is that official, in the right-hand corner, it says certified mail receipt, and then her name is printed in there, it looks like?
Yep, so when we send it, we write the name and address. That was Marge, the receptionist, she does all the mail for me.
But that's a receipt. It's not what you would send typically. You, that card on the left is what you would fill out.
Yeah.
The receipt is what you would get back from the homeowner, and it's stamped.
So, yeah, I have the, yeah, the receipt there, so I'm, you know, I'm sure it does, you know, when you send it, it gets sent and--
What does that date in the middle say?
June 5, 2020.
What's the date of your letter?
June, oh, it's underneath, June 4. Is when I sent it.
Delivered on the 5th.
So probably would have been the same, just a receipt from, yeah, Marge, I don't, yeah, it doesn't look like she did ever sign it, so I'm not sure if she would have ever gotten it, or if it just got sent and--
Well, I think we better sort out what, what's get signed, I mean, because I see something called receipt that has her name and address on it, and it's stamped, like it was delivered on the 5th.
So, yeah--
So what, I don't know if the mailman--
Just delivered it and never got signed, yeah.
Fill that in and stamped it.
I'm honestly not sure.
I think that receipt is from when he bought the postage.
Say it again, please.
I think that, that little receipt in the lower right corner is the receipt for buying the postage, but typically you get back a card like the one on the lower left, once it's been signed.
Once it's been signed. All right, okay.
So, yeah, I went there on January 15th, the tree was still up, so I started getting bids, you know, myself.
Did we ever send multiple pieces of communication to the homeowner? Was that the only letter that you ever sent?
This one was the only one I sent for the hazard tree, and then we sent, I believe, two more, you know, after the tree was to be assessed.
Say that again?
We sent two more after the tree was to be, to be assessed for the assessments, but that was the only one I sent, you know, certified for the removal of the tree.
Well, where would the other letters have, where are the copies of the other letters you would have sent to homeowner?
Those are the ones from, you know, for this meeting. I don't have the--
After, after--
Yeah.
After the tree had been taken down?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this was the only communication before the tree was taken down?
And then, you know, I went and got two other quotes for the removal of the tree. This one's from Rainbow Tree Care, it's for $17,200 for the removal of the tree. And so, same thing, it's a hazard tree, you know, they don't want to climb it, you have to use a crane to remove it, road closure required, and so it's, you know, it's an expensive tree to remove due to the, you know, issues with getting it out of there from the backyard.
So how did, how did these tree companies get access to her property?
They have to use a, like, there's, there's no, no way to get in from her yard, they came in through an adjacent residence yard that allowed them access to their property to view the tree.
Is that the way they would have come in to bid it?
So in order to see it, that's the way they, you know, went to go see the tree, and then they could tell, you know, from the fence that they wouldn't have, you know, there's no way to drive equipment back into the backyard there, this residence.
What's the date on the, who did take the tree down?
Precision Tree Care ended up taking the tree down.
Member Staunton, you said there were two other proposals, what's the other one?
Yep, so that was from Rainbow, this one's from Vineland. This one's for $15,591.
And then the last one?
And then the final one that I went with, from Precision Tree Care, is for $12,000.
And was there any stump grinding? I noticed some of the other ones had stump grinding.
No stump grinding with this one, just the removal of the tree.
Okay, thank you.
And then--
So was the homeowner ever notified that the tree was coming down?
So, I, nope, I sent, you know, I sent the, you know, the letter, and I'd never, you know, never heard anything back, and I, you know, started doing my winter removal, removal list, and that's kind of my, you know, I think I had about five, you know, this winter that, you know, I was doing, and so I started just getting my removals done. I did hear from, you know, Vicky a couple of weeks ago, and I did try to, you know, call her back, but her voicemail box was full, and so, you know, I tried to call her once I heard from her, when she got the, you know, initial assessment letter, but was unable, unable to make contact after that.
But it was taken down on the 14th of June?
Yeah, it was taken down this summer, yeah.
Oh, and the other one was June 4 of 2020. So the ridge, the notice letter was June 4 of 2020?
Is when I sent it.
And then June 14 of 2021 is when the tree was removed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And what did you just say you talked to Dr. Thompson about?
So she, once she got the assessment letter, she called, and we resent the letter, and she left me her number, and I, you know, I tried to make contact and call her back, but was unable to, because the, you know, they couldn't leave a message or anything on the voicemail box.
And this is after the tree was removed?
Yes.
So between the time you sent her the notice in June of '20, and the time the tree was taken down about a year later, you had no communication with her?
Correct, I had gone there--
And then you got, you had three bids by probably April or so, indicating that the cost of taking this tree down is going to be $12,000 to $17,000, but you had no contact with her?
Yes. And usually when I'm doing this, you know, that is, for me, not uncommon to not have contact from the houses that I'm doing this work at.
Thank you. I'm glad you've got thorough records, that's helpful for the conversation.
Thanks.
Okay, do we have anybody else who wants to testify regarding this matter? All right, with regard to the Resolution 2021-81, which is the proposed special assessment for tree removal on the various properties designated, is there a motion to close the public hearing at noon on October 11th and continue action to the October 19 city council meeting?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Staunton, seconds. Any further discussion? Those in favor of approving the motion stated say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All right, so, doctor, if you want to put something in writing to us as well, and to supplement your written test, or your oral testimony, you should do that by noon on October 11th. If you want us to hear, you want us to know anything further?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I've never been here before, but actually it's on there.
All right, next matter is, Director Swenson, is this too? It is a proposed assessment on the Grandview Business District. This is an annual assessment for maintenance of the public areas related to those properties. Director Swenson?
Yep, so now we're on the Grandview. This map defines the area that's covered in the Grandview Maintenance. There's currently 465,000 square feet. The total fee across all that this year is only $465, which equates to a tenth of a cent per square foot. Here's the history of the assessments in the past. There were some large numbers in the 2000s, but it's diminished lately. Most of this maintenance is regarding iron fence work, and some things, brick pillars and items of significance are on this, are on this business district. This is a breakdown of the properties that are affected by this assessment and the dollar amount that they will be charged. And that's the end of the Grandview one.
All right, any questions from council members about the proposed assessments in the Grandview District?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Jackson?
Thank you. So this is a dramatic drop in dollar amounts. Can you flesh that out a little bit more? Is this something that is periodic, or, and are they going to be looking at $30,000 next year instead of $400? Can you explain the variation in the cost, please?
My understanding is a lot of this was back when some of these items were coming online. Now they've reached an age where we're, they're holding their own, but I, we will have costs in the future, as these items need to be replaced or maintained further. But right now, the fees have been pretty minor. I've been talking to Bill Nundorf about the vision of this fund, I guess, for the future, and I'm hoping to reach out to some of the business owners in this area and see what they would like.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Other questions for Director Swenson? It just strikes me that, yeah, I agree with Member Jackson, it's historically low, in my experience on the council, and can't believe we didn't replace any plantings up there, or, you know, it's just odd.
Yeah, so a lot of this comes from 2020, and with COVID, there was a reduced workforce and standards kind of throughout the city, so this number did dwindle partially because of that.
All right, all right, thank you, Director Swenson. This is a public hearing matter. I'm going to open this up now for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify regarding the proposed special assessments to the businesses in the Grandview Business District embodied in Resolution I'm seeing no one coming forward, not hearing anything, anybody online?
No, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing on this matter at noon on October 11th and continue the action to the October 19 city council meeting?
Second.
Motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Jackson. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now Jessica Wilson has a presentation for us on the proposed aquatic vegetation
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have Resolution Number 2021-83 in front of you today. This is our aquatic vegetation improvement. And I have two things for you today. The first is action on the public hearing for annual special assessment for aquatic vegetation management services, and then the next is, I want to hear your thoughts on a proposal to reach out to Mill Pond residents about forming a lake association and making an improvement to the harvester access. So for this aquatic vegetation management, it's a city-coordinated service, and it's an elective service that's requested by homeowners, it's not required by the city or the DNR. And it's in line with our lake and pond management policy in our Conference of Water Resources Management Plan. This is annual assessment, these are water bodies that have been assessed in the past, and the services for each are consistent, as they've been in the past. So Arrowhead Lake, an association was incorporated in September 2015, and they have services for aeration, submerged aquatic plant destruction, and algae control, and then the associated permits and administrative support for those. There are 33 properties that are, that share the cost of that assessment. And the proposed assessment per unit, $306.11, and that's pretty consistent year to year. Indian Head Lake, that has, oh, excuse me, the Arrowhead Lake had 36 accessible units that share the cost. Indian Head Lake, Lake Association Incorporated in May of 2016, 33 accessible units share the cost. That's also services that are similar to previous years, and the proposed assessment for this year, for the 2020 services, is $202.32 each. For Lake Nancy, that lake association was incorporated in 2016, there are 20 accessible units that share the cost for vegetation and algae control there. Their assessment for 2020 services is $91.86 each. And then at Mill Pond, this has a tiered assessment rate, and there's a full REU, a 2/3REU, and a 1/3REU, and the prices are broken down there, $370, $37 each for a full REU, $244, $44 for a 2/3, and $122, $22 for a 1/3REU. So my staff recommendation is to continue the public hearing until October 11th, and then consider adopting Resolution 2021-83 at your October 19 meeting. There's a breakdown of the assessments for each property there, and I'm proposing a one-year assessment. Would you like me to continue on the next slide, or do, should I pause for inaction? How would you like me to proceed?
I think this is good, that's your staff recommendation, that you adopt these. What else were you thinking about in terms of presentation relative to this matter?
So for the Mill Pond, Mill Pond is the only assessed water body that does not have a lake association. Our Conference of Water Resources Management Plan specifies that a lake association is required for these elective services that get assessed back. Mill Pond was not originally included in that policy change that was made in 2015. With the 2018 Conference of Water Resources Management Plan update, we, we made a correction to that, I think that one was left out, because it's a little bit of a different animal, it's on a stream, and they do mechanical harvesting instead of chemical control. So that, that policy gap has been corrected. So that's one of the issues that I'd like to reach out to the, to the residents and have them form a lake association. And then the second is, there's an access ramp at Browndale Park that this big, this piece of equipment, a weed harvester, is launched-- is launched into the Mill Pond. And then it works kind of like a lawnmower, but for a lake. And it goes and it kind of trims those aquatic plants and then has a conveyor to pull that material out, gets loaded onto a truck, and then off-site composted. The ramp, I don't know when it was installed, but it is in very, very poor condition. And each year, contractors have a tough time getting in and out of that space because that trailer gets so weighed down with wet material that they can't easily get out of that space. And it's also in pretty poor shape and pretty ugly looking. So, really, the purpose of that is to provide access for a harvester. So my recommendation would be to reach out to Mill Pond assessed property owners. And I have not had any conversations with them about it. It's kind of this chicken or the egg. Do you talk to the residents first or get feedback from city council first? So that's the direction I'm going, is to check in with you and see what your feedback is as I contemplate reaching out to these residents, requiring that they form a lake association to remain eligible for city-coordinated services that get assessed back. I would give them through 2023, so that's two more seasons under the status quo before saying that that's required for services to continue. And then, for that to continue, not only would they have to form a lake association, they would also, majority of the group would have to approve the replacement of that harvester access ramp. And I was talking with the Parks Department, and we think that it's reasonable for them to pay for half of the cost and the city to pay for the other half of the cost as we have an interest too in how that park looks and caring for that space.
Thoughts from council members on the recommendation of staff? Ms. Wilson, on what she'd like to see done over at the Mill Pond? Member Staunton?
I understand the 50/50. What's it 50/50 of?
It would be to replace the concrete access.
Right, but do you have any idea how much that's going to cost?
Oh, the cost, yeah, we're guessing about $50,000. We have a design scope from, it's been designed already.
And how many properties is it spread over?
There's a total of 63 properties. They are not all assessed equally. I do have a draft letter that I've not yet printed where I have those figures. I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately, right now, but...
I just wanted to get a ballpark sense.
It's somewhere in the $300, $200, $100 mark for those separate tiers. I could provide that more specific. I regret not having it available right now. But, yeah, the plan in my draft letter is to describe similar things on that slide that I shared about the lake association requirement, the harvester access ramp repair. And then I provided a general cost idea based on that $50,000 total. $25,000 gets broken down among these 63 properties, based on their REU.
Mayor, members of the council, this is Chad. I think if you looked at this and increased this three to four times, you're at that $50,000 number. So you're probably looking at a top assessment of about $1,000 for those one unit, or one REU units. But the feedback we're looking for is, do you agree with staff's recommendation to not do these services because they're not following our current city policy of, they don't have an association and we keep doing it? And trying to get answers from them is the difficult part for Jessica. There's, what'd you say, 100 properties? So who does she go to to get answers on what's the services we're providing? The benefit of having that lake association is now she's going to a board and just getting that clear guidance and letting them figure it out, instead of having her just continue the services we've been doing or changing it. And we just can't get answers because there's just so many people to work through.
I think the challenge with not having an association is I hear from one or two people that are making decisions for the entire group because there's no formal process where we're considering the majority of the beliefs and attitudes and feelings about the decisions that are being made, so...
Well, is there a distinguishing factor between the Mill Pond and these other waterways that we maintain? I mean, here, the Mill Pond is just part of Minnehaha Creek and the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. I mean, if we told these folks we weren't going to maintain this after 2023 unless it became an association, what would be our inherent responsibilities as a community to the Watershed District in making sure that that waterway stayed clear and water was passable through it? We'd have to do it anyway. So what are our obligations as a community as part of the Watershed District on the creek?
We have no obligation from the Watershed District to do mechanical harvesting. Mostly, it's done for, so that you can paddle easily through that space and for aesthetics. The Watershed District's not interested in funding harvesting. When, in 2015, we looked at the assessment breakdown and did a little bit of historical review on the operation here. It's been, harvesting has been happening at Mill Pond since the 80s. And the Watershed District, for the first year or two, participated in that and then said that they were no longer going to fund that activity.
Member Anderson?
Thank you. What's the process for forming an association? Has the city had a hand in forming other associations?
The other three lake associations formed in response to our policy. And it entails forming a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and officially incorporating as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit group. And then they meet annually, once a year, and it's up to them to define their own bylaws. So they'll have articles of incorporation and bylaws, and we've provided support to groups as they're kind of navigating what that means to form an association.
So in this case, we would just take that legal action and farm them of that? Is that the idea?
They would form that group on their own, independent of the city, and we would support them in their effort to do that. But we could say that that would be required for us to continue those services.
Has there been resistance to, have they been asked to form the association?
This is the first time I've said it out loud. So, it's kind of the chicken or egg, right? Do you check in with residents first or check in with city council first? And this is my first, I'm reaching out to get feedback from you guys on if this is a wise path, one that we want to go down before I reach out to residents. So they have not heard, unless they're listening or in the room right now, this would be the first time they're hearing it.
Okay, and then the source of funding for the city's 50%?
Right, that's what we're proposing. And that's a negotiation with the Parks Department. So, they acknowledge that, right now, the access ramp is asphalt that is crumbling in a pretty poor condition. So we asked ourselves, if the Mill Pond residents weren't interested in participating, would we do something here? We probably still would, make some improvements there, but certainly would not put in an access since, to the same level that would accommodate a harvester, as would be required for this service to continue.
But the funding would be out of the Parks operating budget.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
So we would still put in some kind of a ramp that would allow people to slip in a kayak or canoe or what? Not necessarily big enough to accommodate a harvester.
Right, right. But it would still be something there, so people could still access it with a canoe or walk down there, something like that.
Do we have anybody on the Mill Pond that's not paying their special assessments?
I've not heard of that being the case. I don't know that I would necessarily know, though. Assessing might know more about that than me.
So Mayor, I think we just wanted to raise the issue with you. And we can go out, and if you're comfortable with us going out to the Mill Pond residents and getting feedback, and then we can bring it back, bring it back to you, just to see. If they're super supportive, this is not an issue. But we just want to make you aware that we're considering not doing something we've done for a long time because they're not meeting one of our policies. So, if no one's objecting to just us having that conversation and sending the letter out, then we can bring that response back to you.
Yeah, that seems like a good approach. Let's find out what they're thinking about and not engage in guesswork.
Sure.
Okay. I mean, it may be that they want to continue with no association, but they're more than happy to pay for half the ramp. And if it works the way it works now, and we're getting people to pay the assessment with no association in place, that's another possibility. So, let's find out what the neighbors think. Okay, then, anything further on the proposed assessments?
I just want to see if you want to take in action on the recommendation to continue the public hearing and then consider adopting it at your next meeting on October 19th for the Resolution 2021-83.
All right, thank you. Yep, thank you. This is a public hearing matter. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify regarding this proposed aquatic vegetation special assessment for Indian Head Lake, Arrowhead Lake, Lake Nancy, and the Mill Pond? All right, nobody online? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing at noon on October 11th regarding this matter and continue the action to the October 19 city council meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Anderson. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion of state, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And then we are on to the 50th and France Proposed Special Assessment Improvement. And Derek Otten, our Facilities Manager, has this matter. Mr. Otten, nice to see you again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, I'm presenting for public hearing the 50th and France Association Business District. This would be the 2020 Maintenance Improvement Number M21. So, real quick history of this. This area is comprised of about 170-plus retail shops, along with a number of sidewalks and paths and three parking ramps that are all city-owned and maintained. Our maintenance from the city includes snow removal, landscaping, trash recycling services, general cleaning and maintenance of sidewalks and other public walkways. And then we do employ one full-time maintenance technician in the area. For the calendar year of 2020, the assessable costs for businesses in the district is $411,861.27, and the square footage is $452,347. And that would be a space that is leasable and owned by other businesses. For reference, we did include the 2020 assessable costs. So these were from the calendar year of 2019. And you can see that there is a significant jump there in both the cost, but also the square footage of space. And that's mainly due to a couple of things. The Nolan Mainz development, which was constructed in 2018, 2019. Some of those costs finally came to fruition in the calendar year of 2020. And then also the maintenance and the upkeep in and around that area was part of that, too. And then there was also COVID precautions and some of the other maintenance standards we had to increase and keep around there during that time period. Some history, kind of showing what the M21 Maintenance District from 1998 until 2020 and 2021. You can see in 2020, the square foot cost was $0.81 per square foot for each tenant. And then in 2022, it's $0.98 per square foot. And again, that's an increase in both costs, but the increased square footage did help offset some of those costs. So our recommendation is that we continue the public hearing until October 11th at noon, and then consider approval on October 19th for Resolution Number 2021-84, and that's Improvement M21.
All right, thank you, Ms. Otten. Any questions for our Facilities Manager, Ms. Otten, in regard to this matter? This is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone who wishes to testify regarding the proposed special assessments at the, to the 50th and France Business District property owners embodied in Improvement Number M21 and Resolution 2021-84? See, no one coming forward, hearing nothing? Anybody on the line that wishes to testify? All right. Nobody wants to testify regarding this matter? Is there a motion to close the public hearing at noon on October 11th and continue the action to the October 19 city council meeting on Resolution 2021-84, which is the 50th and France Business District Proposed Special Assessments?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce. Does the motion is stated? Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the motion of state, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And one last matter, Alicia McAndrews, our new Finance Director. This is a, yeah, your first swire into the city council, I think, and you get to talk about delinquent utilities.
I know, glamorous first start here. All right, good evening, mayor, members of the council. My name is Alicia McAndrews, Finance Director for the city. So I'm here to discuss, as you said, the certification of delinquent utility bills. I'll just cover briefly the utility billing certification process. So state statute and city code allow for the city to certify unpaid utility charges to the county for collection through property taxes. So here we lay out the process that, it begins for any utility accounts with balances over $50 and delinquent for 30 days or longer. Are notified in writing of the pending certification and the date of today's hearing. We also notified them that a $35 administrative fee will be added to the delinquent accounts after October 19th. Customers will, however, continue to have the opportunity to pay overdue balances until November 19th. And then, after November 19th, the delinquent accounts that are attached, there's a list of them in your packet for today, will be sent to the county, and the county will apply them to the property taxes, but also apply an interest rate of 6.5%. And this is a one-year assessment. Just a brief history from 2016 to 2021, kind of walking through the three steps of our process here. So, the September notices, I'll show here the number of properties and then the total amount of the utility charges. And then you'll see that they decrease then at the second step with October public hearing. And we expect in November, again, that there will be even fewer properties that will actually be certified. So, just wrapping it up here, our staff recommendation is that you consider closing the public hearing portion tomorrow on October 11th and then adopting Resolution 2021-86 at the 19th council hearing that will certify the delinquent utility bills to the county auditor that will be assessed on the 2022 property taxes. I stand for any questions that you may have.
Yeah, thanks for asking that. Any questions for Ms. McAndrews regarding these proposed assessments?
Could you just go back to that slide number four?
Is this number four? Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Did you have a slide in your deck on the, the delinquent accounts?
The actual list?
Yeah, the actual list.
It's quite lengthy, so I don't have a slide on it. But there is the complete list, and it excludes identifying information. Yeah, it's in the packet.
Thank you, we got it here. I was just wondering if you could delineate which, you know, if, whether some of these properties were commercial or were they condominiums? I see some out on York Avenue South. And I'm trying to figure out from the address whether it might be multifamily or it might be commercial building?
Yeah, it is, yeah, a variety of different properties. I don't have it on this report, but we have the capability of producing a different report that distinguishes.
Yeah, because some of the, two of them on York are pretty significant, closing in on the $30,000 mark.
Yes, so those are two unique cases. Periodically, we do audits of our utility billing accounts. And there are two that, as a result of the audit, were sent notifications of corrections that were made, both a credit and a charge to reconcile the account. So those two are pretty big ones that are going to certification. We have done outreach, we have sent letters and called, notifying them of this, and offered to support a financing option of, you know, payment for six years, and haven't heard a response. So, that is why it's now going to certification.
This is all part of that internal water usage audit that you did? Do you know?
I am inclined to say yes, but haven't been around long enough to know if that's the right answer. But I can follow up to be sure if that is. I think so.
All right, yeah, that would be good to know. All right, yeah, that would be good to know. Thank you. Other questions for Ms. McAndrews? This is a public hearing matter. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify regarding any of these proposed assessments? And delinquent utilities? Anybody online that wishes to testify?
No, sir.
Okay. With regard to the certification of delinquent utilities, is there a motion to close the public hearing on that matter at noon on October 11th? And continue the action to the October 19 City Council meeting?
Still moved. Second.
Got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Jackson. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion is stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. That completes our public hearing work this evening. Thanks to all who helped on that portion of the agenda. And then we're going to move on to reports and recommendations. And we have a single item there involving the 2022 Proposed Board and Commission Interview Process. And MJ Layman is with us, our Community Engagement Coordinator, to talk about some of the process refinements that the staff is going to be recommending. Welcome back.
Good evening again, Mayor, council members. Glad to be here. The last time I actually was in front of you talking about the same topic was January 5th of 2021. And at that time, we actually talked about what we were going to do for our 2021 Board and Commission Interview Process. And then tonight, I want to share some enhancements to the overall process and have council determine tonight the 2022 Board and Commission Interview Process. So hopefully after tonight, we can leave here, and I can go ahead and implement the plan that you guys would like to approve tonight. So a little bit of grounding, we do have value statements, and so this is our engagement value statement that was vetted in 2020. It was reaffirmed in 2021, and talks about how we're looking for that dialogue of perspectives, and that we want to build our trust by demonstrating those principles, relationships, equity, inclusivity, and accountability. Which also brings us to our equity value statement. Again, vetted at the same time and reaffirmed in 2021, and which really highlights the equitable opportunities to participate in local government. Our budget work plan has a goal, number four, foster an inclusive and engaged community. And one of the strategies that's been on that work plan is to develop and implement a plan to increase diversity of boards and commission members. We are actually looking at implementing this in 2022. However, still tonight, part of tonight's presentation will highlight components around the application, some outreach and recruitment, and interviewing, which will be embedded in the overall plan. One data point that we do have, and you did actually see the same slide back in January 5th of 2021, so it hasn't changed because we haven't collected more yet of this time. But it's just good to point out that diversifying boards and commissions is going to require us to look at our data and to identify those gaps on where we can actually diversify. So this is just one data point, the RACE data. And a reminder, the 2019 active members, that's what we had, is still active in 2019. It was a voluntary survey. Pretty good turnout, but it was voluntary. The Edina, that's from actually the census of what our stats are for the city of Edina, and then also Hennepen County on the far right. The plan is to actually repeat that survey this year. I've been doing it on a two-year process, so to conduct it yet this year so that I can have the results as it comes into time to making those selections. And while we are looking at RACE, we do recognize there are other demographic characteristics, like age, language, disability, gender, et cetera, that we want to consider as well. This is just one data point that I'm bringing to you tonight. So here's what our current process looks like, basically from top to bottom. The items that are in green are primary, those staff responsibilities, and then there's two that kind of fall into the realm of the city council. So if we're going to change things around this year a little bit, I have this arrow that's pointing our reappointments up to the top. We would hope to actually do our reappointments a little bit early. One of the things I heard from council is that they would really like us to be able to let people know more about the positions that are coming up, so that people can be really like, understanding what they're hoping to accomplish, or how they envision their work with the city. So that's one change. Then next, in our recruitment outreach, we're going to expand the plan a little bit of how we do that. In the next slide, I'll show you a little bit of those options. Our application, we're going to look at framing up our questions a little bit different, so that we can gather a lot of that good information, so that you guys can make those best selections. We comes into interview, which we'll talk about at the end. And then, of course, there are the appointments that happen after that. And then city, a staff, we conduct a general orientation for all of our new members, and hopefully get them prepared for serving. So the recruitment and outreach. On the left-hand side are all the pass actions. So these are things we typically do when it comes to a topic or something to get people involved. We're going to look at some new actions this year. Targeted direct mailings, looking at doing some paid ads, working with the schools, so maybe we can get some information out to parents. And then flyers in like multifamily housing complexes. So we'll actually track those and hopefully gather some data to see how effective those are, and hopefully be able to do that through the application process. So our interview goals for this year, I mentioned this a little bit, gathering that information is our top goal to make those best selections, and how we're going to try to do that through that application, having some focus interview questions, hopefully have a process that will allow us to get the information in front of those that are making those selections. Last year, we brought two other goals to you, the positive candidate experience, making sure that people feel comfortable with the process. Sometimes this is their first encounter with government, so we want them to have a good experience. And then that time, we, you know, we talk about that balance of time of a person coming in and doing that interview, and having the panel, and making sure that there's time for both ways to kind of get to know each other. In addition to that is access to an equitable process, that we hope that each person has a similar interview experience. And we talked a lot about that around how many people served on that panel, and making sure that was consistent, and that sometimes it's difficult to equitably consider all candidates when there are different panel members, and they haven't seen the entire panel. So we think that if we actually focus on those second two bullet points, we should be able to get that first bullet point accomplished, that if we put a good process in place thinking about these things, we should be able to get the information to make the best selections possible. So in 2021, so January 5th, when I talked to you, this is what I heard from council. I went back to the video and listened to it. You talked about having a limited number of interviewers is effective, so that panel kind of keeping it a smaller size and consistent for all of our candidates. We asked some focus and same questions to all the candidates. It was something that kind of came out of our student process that really was successful, and we kind of tried to replicate that in the 2021. Involving chairs was helpful, and you guys all felt like it was helpful. And then we had a small conversation about, do we interview maybe less candidates? What we did last year, just a reminder, we conducted virtually. We did have COVID. We had two council members in addition to the city manager, and two chairs that served on the panel for all of the interviews, so that same panel was consistent throughout the entire process. And then the recommendations for appointments were me at that panel and actually brought to council for final approval. So this is kind of a tentative timeline of what it would look like for this year, that I'm here today to propose a plan. Repoyments, again, would happen in November, moving that up a little bit. Application opening in the December timeframe, closes in January, interviews happen after that. And then finally, we would make appointments around the February 15 timeline, so that people can start on March 1st. So this brings us to the interview discussion. In front of you is kind of a quick summary of what those three options actually are. The full council participation, live interviews, full council participation recorded, and the third one, council subcommittee and live interviews. In your staff report, there was a table, which, if I can find, I tried to pull it out for you, so it was a little bit larger. What is it? Did I close it? Okay. But it has a little bit more context around those options. Does this work for you guys to see? Okay. So full council, that would include all of you as participating. A subcommittee would be less than all of you. If we have two or less, of course, then we don't have a quorum. Live interviews, that actually means they could be in-person or virtual. And the recorded interviews is kind of a new concept. There's actually some software programs that exist that we've demoed, which would allow individuals to apply to actually record their interview, so it's available to the interview panel to review, to watch in advance. So there's different considerations that go along with all of these different options as far as your participation, how many meetings we might need to have, the candidate's participation, how we make that decision approval, and then some additional information down at the bottom. I would say the highlights of this is that if we do have, of course, full council, then we do have a quorum, and that we would have to have all of our meetings posted and open to the public. However, a recorded interview option actually eliminates that, because that wouldn't be a public meeting, it would be individual members watching them on their own. However, that still would require a meeting, so that the members that were on the panel could debrief and ultimately make those selections to be appointed.
I think that gets to the majority of this stuff, unless you have questions about the matrix that's put together.
Questions from council members? About the proposed process? Yes?
If I could just add to, so the different options, there, you could combine some of these options if you wanted to do a subcommittee for video interviews. All of the options have different requirements for open meeting law and for what's private or public. What I would suggest is that you not worry about that as much as focusing on what is the best candidate experience, what will make the best council decision, and what will be the best for scheduling, all of those three things. And then we will work with figuring out the specifics, that's public, private, open, or not, because it gets pretty specific to how you're using the data and who's accessing it when. I think one thing MJ didn't mention is, of the software that we looked at for recorded interviews, one of the advantages is that candidates are asking specific questions that are recorded, and then as you're viewing them, you can have question number one, and it will show you each candidate's answer to question number one. So it makes it a little bit easier where you can view the interviews in a couple of different ways. So that's just an alternative to try.
Thank you.
So I have a question.
Yep, Member Staunton.
So on a recording, is there an option, is one of these options to do what we did last year, except record those interview sessions and let others watch them later, and then have the whole council make a deliberation?
That is an option. I would call that probably option 3A or option 4 on the chart. So it's not exactly identified as an option, but it certainly could be. So that would be where you're sharing the data, so that when the subcommittee is bringing the recommendations to council, all council had access to that data. I'm not sure, though, if all council members are watching the recorded interviews. I'm not sure. I guess the subcommittee then would be sort of trying to do what we call the, you know, jigsaw puzzle, where you're trying to figure out of the 50-some applicants, where might people fit to fill the vacancies, so that could save some time that way.
So I, I mean, one of my preference, and I think one of the things that went well last year from both MJ's description and from the anecdotal stuff I heard, is I was always uncomfortable with all five of us, plus chairs, plus staff, I mean, it was a pretty overwhelming experience for those people who were interviewing. And I liked the notion of two people with maybe, you know, the same panel. I like the equity of it as well, that everybody gets the same panel, because inevitably, over four nights, we would, somebody would be missing for this or missing for that, and we wouldn't all have the same experience. And I'm fine with that panel making a recommendation to us, but it just seems like one extra layer would be, we could, we could look at those interviews as well if we weren't on the panel to just be more informed about it, is all. That's, that's what led me to that notion. I'm, I'm just floating it out there, I don't know if that's the right answer, but I, I like what we did last year, because it seems less more friendly to the interviewees, that it's a consistent experience with a group that's not intimidating.
Can you clarify the recorded interview? Is that each person has their questions, they're using some tool, they just answer those questions on their own, it's saved, and then we can watch that? Is that?
Correct, yeah.
That's right.
So they would be sent a notification, they log in, they respond to it, it's recorded, we receive notifications, done, and we can access it. And that does allow a little bit more flexibility for the candidate as well, because they could do it as soon as they're done applying, where sometimes people apply at the end of the process, and they have like, days before they have to go to the interview, because those interviews have to be a fixed day and time.
I think that just feels really cold to me. I mean, I like that, you know, it's bad enough we all have these masks on, but then to do another layer of, you don't even get to talk to a real person. I don't know.
So, you know, so I wasn't thinking about it maybe that way. Maybe this is option 5A or something, I don't know. So I like the idea of people being able to provide, I'll just say it this way, provide answers to the same questions, and so we get the same information from everybody, but as a first phase. And so based on that first phase, then we go from 50 to 20. And then those 20 then go through the process we went through, which was maybe they do the interview with two of us, that kind of a deal. That's kind of how I was, was thinking of it. I wasn't thinking necessarily that we would choose the slate just based on the video alone.
Thank you. I get, what I'd like to do is just share a little bit, because I think I've seen every format of, of the interview process for boards and commissions. In 2019, for instance, was my first year, there was a combination of various council members who sat in and interviewed everybody, and then kind of sorted it out. But there was no consistency in the questions, that's for sure. The following year, we, 2020, yeah, 2020, we, we had the interview process, which was similar, but there were more commission and board members present in the room. And that was, that was a lot of folks in there. Last year, I didn't participate in the board and commission interviews, but I did have, prior to that, all of the student interviews, which, and those were all virtual. So I've kind of seen all parts of that, and there are bits and pieces of all those experiences that are helpful and useful. In a business setting, you probably wouldn't be hiring people without a personal interview. It just wouldn't happen, because you do need to look in people's eyes and try to gauge what's going on. And additionally, the applications themselves all vary, and there can be sometimes questions that might come up, or you might be seeking clarification based on the applicant's statements on their application. So I guess, I tend to fall into the camp of personal interviews. How that can happen, I don't know, but I, there's, there's a lot of value to that, I think. Although, the consistency of the questions is, that's a, that's a big question mark for me, because I see a lot of merit in that. And having a similar process or experience for all the applicants would be important as well. So I don't have a conclusion, I just wanted to throw those things out.
I would suggest one option in hearing, as the council is wrestling with this, one option that might combine that and get similar to Councilmember Staunton's suggestion and Councilmember Pierce's suggestion, might be the council subcommittee to do the live in-person interviews. Everyone does recorded and has access to view that before the decision, so you still have the consistency of everyone answering the same questions, while also you have that in-person interview, and the two council members who do the in-person are making a recommendation to the council, but the council now has some more data other than just the application to view, that may be two or three questions, or however many we set. The only thing I'm a little bit leery about in terms of using those first questions as a cut to decide who to interview. a cut to, to decide who to interview is that at this point, we don't really know yet how many people we need to interview, because it really varies based on not just the openings, but the number of commissions each applicant is interested in. Because oftentimes, we end up placing someone on a commission that was not their first choice, and so usually we need many more applicants to actually make all of the spots work, and I don't know exactly what that number is. So if we were to use it as a cut, just understanding that we may have to make that decision later in terms of how many applicants actually went to the in-person interviews. One thing that MJ had suggested with moving the reappointment process up certainly helps us get a better idea of the openings.
You know, the process we used tonight during the work session has got me wondering too about accommodating people that would be interested in serving but want to appear virtually for an interview. And we, we run the same sort of hybrid operation for board and commission interviews that we ran the night for the work session as, as an accommodation to people that are still anxious about appearing in person, although I think we're requiring the commissions to meet personally, aren't we, just masked?
Yes, so because they're still subject to the open meeting law, when it's their public meeting where they are a voting member, they're required to be in person. So tonight they weren't because they're not the body that's voting. So it's really an open meeting law. For commission interviews, we could allow the option to each candidate if we wanted to choose either in-person or virtually. We, that should be easy to accommodate.
Yes, we can definitely do a hybrid. The only thing is, is that if it is full council participation and we use interactive technology, that's when we fall into the requirement by the state statute that we need to be able to allow the public to see and hear the meeting. So like tonight, when we did the work session, because we're using that hybrid model, we did actually stream it on YouTube Live.
What about the, I'd say, let's just say we had 50 candidates. Is one of the suggestions that two council members conduct the interviews of all 50 candidates and make recommendations, and the other council members could be able to review the recordings of those? So why, why wouldn't we, if you can review the recordings of the interviews and we get the same sort of questions we're asking everybody, why can't we divide up that labor in some form or fashion amongst the five of us so that not, we're not, we're not putting the burden on two people or three people? We're splitting it up some way so that it's not so onerous and we're not taking four nights to do it?
I think that definitely could be an option. The one challenge is you, you probably would need some sort of work session to get to a recommendation then.
Yeah, I mean, that would be okay.
So that, yeah, and that, that would be just adding, that would be adding one more meeting. But I don't, if the goal is consistency of candidate experience and they're having both the recording and the in-person interview and you're somehow sharing that information, I think then that's your, the council's decision as to what you feel is the best balance of all of those needs.
Did I, did I hear that differently, though, was, for the clarification? Are you thinking that we would have council members like to do a live interview and record it and then share that with other council members?
Right.
Not a pre-recording?
Yeah, let's just say that, so let's take a hypothetical, 50 interviewees.
Yep.
We got an odd number of council members, so, but I'm thinking each, you know, each council member knows they're going to be in on 25 meetings, right? You've got a team of two. So you've got two taking 25, another two taking 25, and maybe the mayor has to be there for all of them.
Then you'd be good, then you got a quorum and then you got to do it all.
Yeah.
I think there might be a serial meeting issue, though, there also. We'd, we'd have to work through what that would look like, because even if not everyone is in the room at the same time, now if you're all viewing all of the same information through all of those meetings, we probably need to open all of those meetings up. But we'd, we can sort through that outside of today.
Do you think, David, there's a way to cut the workload down for folks with a combination of people doing it? I mean, it has that serial sort of element to it, but it's not really serial. You're not, you're not interviewing the same people.
Yeah, but it may be that all the recordings are public then. If they're, well...
What's wrong, well, I mean, guess theoretically, what's...
I'm not sure that's a bad thing.
Yeah, what's wrong with that?
There is, well, if you're asking what's wrong with recording all of the interviews and making it all public, there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, I mean, I don't mean legally, I just mean from a transparency standpoint, it seems like, well...
And that part of it, I think, is just the balance of the candidate experience versus the, the council full open and transparency and whether or not you want all council members involved in all interviews. So I think that's just a, a preference and philosophical choice.
I wonder if we'd limit that pool of candidates if they knew they were going to get recorded?
There's potential for a barrier, that some of them may decide that they're not comfortable with it.
Yeah, I would think there would be some that would say, I'm not interested in being recorded, and then have it be public. I don't, you know, no particular reason, but they just have a high level of discomfort, just like people have a discomfort level coming here and talking to us in person.
Yeah. That's a good point.
So just from my experience, I wanted to share a couple of things. One was, I really liked the panel of four. I thought that worked really well to have two commissioners and two city council people. We had a consistent set of questions, and it, it's work, but I did like that smaller group, and I liked including the commissioners. So that's one thing. Another thing is, I think we should rotate year to year, for sure, or some however, get a rotation so that every city council member has an opportunity to do this. Because I think the meeting these people when they come in for an interview is invaluable. I, I love seeing people that I've interviewed then on the commissions and hearing their work. I understand them a lot better and love to see how they've grown and, and taken on the work of the city. So it's, it's really gratifying. I think everybody who serves on the city council should have an opportunity to do that. So those are my two things. As far as the recording, I'm not comfortable with that, but that's, I don't like to be recorded myself. So I guess I, I'm not, not real fond of that idea. But those are my thoughts.
I was just heading in that same direction about the experience that, think of last year, was it the two of us and then two commissioners? But then Ron took on the students with John Seidman.
I think they're looking at you.
I think you guys are fishing the barrel.
The experience of 2022 belongs to the two of you, is my guess. Gee, I could see that one coming from a long way.
But I think that's the way to solve the serial issue is to say, okay, we got two that'll take it this year, two will take it the following year, you got one that's always handling the students. It's at least another option. I think you guys would be unbelievable interviewing 50 people over four nights.
You got me cornered.
We wouldn't have you cornered if we hadn't already done it. It would, you'd be flipping coins.
I do think there is something to the, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I mean, last year went pretty well, I thought, and so, aside from Jim and Carolyn doing it again, I guess, I guess I could take my turn.
Does that help?
I think where you're leaning is option three with Councilmember Pierce and Councilmember Staun, and two commissioners.
And two commissioners. Yeah, I, I really liked having them. I thought it put people at ease to have them there.
So I don't, I'm, I'm not going to commit to doing 50 interviews right now. I don't disagree with the value of it, but from a timing perspective, I just don't know if I'm going to be able to do that. So I'm, I'm comfortable if we're choosing it as an option, and then we'll just kind of, I'll have to personally see as we go forward if it's gonna, if it's gonna fit schedule-wise for me.
Okay, yes, it's like three to four nights, about three, three and a half hours.
Yeah.
If council is comfortable going with option three, we don't need the names of the two council members tonight, we can figure that out later.
Let's go back to talk about that serial problem. What would be the, what's the potential legal problem of saying, okay, James and Kevin, you take night one, Carolyn and Jim, you take night two, Ron and Jim, you take night three, and then night four, Carolyn and Kevin take night four. What's, what's wrong with that? Why is that, why is that a potential?
I think it's only a potential problem if you're then recording those interviews and sharing the recording with all of the other council members and not making that accessible to the public.
Okay, that makes sense, and we don't, I don't, I'm with Carolyn, I don't really like the recording idea, but at the end, if we did something like that, then we got together for a work session and get everybody's input on candidates.
Well, the other issue is you don't, everybody doesn't have the same experiences, what you're sacrificing. And I remember from the years where some people would miss some of the meetings, then you're, you know, then you're comparing people that you like, that you saw, that I liked, that I saw, but I didn't see the people you interviewed, you didn't see the people I interviewed. I mean...
But last year, when Carolyn and I did it, you had to count on us.
Yeah, which I was okay with.
Yeah, but I don't mind counting on everybody's opinion either. I mean, I, I was worried about that same thing last year when just the two of us did it, and then we, we might have some favorites that other people, if they had sat in on all of the interviews, might not have those same favorites, but it seemed to work out, in my experience, about the same as it had when we all interviewed them.
Well, but I remember past years where we were all supposed to interview them, but we, for a variety of reasons, not everybody was there. And then when it came to the deliberation time, it was very challenging because some people hadn't seen some and other people had, and, and that became difficult to decide, well...
Yeah, there was a sense of kind of feeling like you saw a particular person kind of bidding for that one over actually experiencing the same thing for another person and on a different night.
And I, and I get that you got to weigh that against the notion of two people carrying the whole burden, which may not be reasonable either, so...
If you mix it up a little bit, it seems like you, you've relied on a broader range of opinion than you have if you've just gotten two people that are going to give the rest of the group advice on what their preferences were. I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out a way to lessen the load. This is important work, but it also is a lot to ask of people to, to go four nights for three and a half hours at a crack interviewing candidates. I'd rather, personally, I'd rather split it up some way, somehow, so that we ease the burden on people and then just trust the judgment of each other on particular candidates.
So I have a question. If we were to share our notes and then all deliberate together, would we have a data problem with that?
You would have to, any information that all five of you are going to rely upon to make decisions, you would have to share with the public. So there couldn't be any information utilized that was seen by all five of you but not shared with the public.
So we would maybe take our notes to the deliberation meeting, which would be public then. So I could say, I interviewed Ron Anderson and he knows senior housing, he'd be great for a senior housing problem. And then everybody in the world would know that because those are from my notes and I'm sharing them with the fellow council members in an open meeting. But I wouldn't pass the notes over in the previous day so everybody could study ahead of time.
I think how some councils tend to, volunteer, commission members are volunteers, which fall under, and I'll let you jump in if I'm not explaining this correctly, but fall basically under personnel data. So a lot of their information is not public unless they're appointed. Many council members, if they're doing interviews that are open to the public or if they're deliberating open to the public, that's where they will assign candidates a number instead of their name and share information that way, if it's private data being shared in a public forum, which might make some candidates more comfortable, but it's kind of past the point at which you really can explain that to them anyway. I think so far, every process, you have selected excellent commissioners who have done an amazing job representing Edina, so there is not necessarily a wrong answer. It really is about, as a group, what do you think is the most effective and what will be balancing all of those issues that you're discussing tonight?
Well, it sounds like we agree on no recording and panels of two plus two commissioners.
Yeah.
And we just need to sort out the rest of it. Is that good enough for tonight? Can we then figure out where we're going from there?
Yes.
Yeah. That's what I was going to say.
Otherwise, we're going to make the over.
Okay.
By a long ways at the rate we're going. Not that there's anything wrong with that.
Did you have anything for the aviation noise update? What about the, I just, just one final thing that popped into my head, and this is probably difficult from a candidate management standpoint, but what if you said, we got, we got eight commissions, and let's say that on a particular night, the group was, you had all the candidates for the certain commissions. You didn't have the smattering of people across a range of opportunities that were out there. So you said, okay, Kevin and James are going to take the planning commission candidates tonight and the energy and environment commission candidates and the, you know, this group. And so you're getting their opinions when you have your work session on the group of people that were assigned to just that, you know, that were applying for just that position or that commission.
So, okay, so we asked them to actually signify as many as they're interested in. Some people quote one because they know they're only interested in one thing, some people put all of them because they feel like they just want to do public service. So this goes back to Lisa's talking kind of about that jigsaw puzzle that depending on where the openings are and the talent that you have in front of you, you kind of need to pull out those, those skills within them to figure out how they fit best with the open spots that we have. So traditionally, we have not actually lined them up by what their interest is, just because they might be a candidate for more than what they signified, and an interview might discover something that they're a really good fit and they just didn't even know that there was a commission that might align with the skill that they have.
Yeah, that's, that's true, that's the experience. I mean, why did you, why did you put down the transportation commission? Well, I didn't know. I just wanted to serve my town.
Yep.
And I just put down these three and I don't care where I serve. But by the way, I'm an architect and, you know, all of a sudden you think, this, they didn't apply for heritage preservation board, but there they are, lying there is a great asset, so, yeah, that probably is a bad idea. Okay. Well, to Kevin, to Kevin's point, to Number Shawn's point, we got enough to go on for now. Okay. All right, that's it for reports and recommendations. We don't have an interview process to approve yet, I don't think, do we have?
We don't actually need a vote on this, so normally we would have done this at a work session and scheduling just did not allow it, so I think we have what we need for tonight. for tonight.
Given general enough guidance, I think we don't need a motion. All right. I take it nothing's come in from a correspondence standpoint that we need to be aware of? Director Benarot, you see anything, roll in that we need to be aware of? Okay. I didn't get anything from former member Brindle about aviation noise, so I don't have anything to report there. No, Assistant. Andrew Schaefer, anything? Mayor and council comments start down with Member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I, what a couple of weeks for this city. Holy smokes, it feels like we've done something almost every night. And I just wanted to thank Director Milner for the infrastructure tour and his team. It was fascinating. I think I sent this in an email, but I'll say it publicly. One of the commissioners turned to me and said, every resident in Edina should go on this tour. It's so interesting, and it's good to know how our city works and, and the wonderful things that we do to make this a nice place to live. So thank you for the team for doing that. It was really fascinating. We have a water treatment center under the Jerry's parking lot, which everybody's always surprised by. That was really cool. And then the next night, we had Chuck Marone from Strong Towns give a presentation, a virtual presentation. I got to watch that later. It was fascinating. It's really fun to think about how the future of transportation in particular, but sort of town, city planning, trying to find those areas where things aren't working and we can fix them. I think we have a process for that. But also, he talked about places where we can build wealth by having, slowing things down and kind of pooling where people gather, and I thought that was a really interesting idea of how we can build wealth. And then we had the town talk with the fire department, and then we had the rededication of the Yancey Park, which was fantastic, what a team effort. And then this evening, we got to see the opening of the Bauer over on Seventieth Street, which is, again, investment in our city, and it was pretty exciting. So there's a lot going on, and I think everybody put time and effort into those things. It's good to see our city growing and being strong.
Thank you. Member Anderson.
Thanks. I, well, the waterfront got covered there, and it has been a very active and busy couple of weeks. I guess I had an impression that I wanted to share from yesterday's dedication, and that was a, a, a community coming together to recognize an event that was important and a passage. The day was beautiful, the speakers were great, the, the plaques that were available, the facsimile of the ultimate was available, but I think the, the message was that there was a wrong that was righted yesterday. And I, I found that to be very moving, that, that experience was very moving, and I came away, in driving away from there, I thought, you know, this is a, this is very unique and very uplifting to anyone in attendance. I don't know if, how much was filmed and what will ultimately be available, but I'm, I trust that that's possible for people and that they might get some, some small sense of a, of a step that needed to be taken and that was important.
Thank you. Member Son.
Well said, well said. It was a great day. And I echo all the other comments. Great recitation by Member Jackson of all the things that are going on. I wanted to go back to our meeting, our last meeting, where we talked about the Morningside infrastructure, flood infrastructure project, and just ask staff to, it doesn't have to be tonight, but in the future, to come back with some updates on where we are, especially with, you know, what dawned on me in the wake of that visit was that we have an engineering project that kind of morphed into a park project, and, and that kind of took some of the neighbors by surprise. And I'm, I'm talking really about the, the park proper, not the Weber Woods part. I think everybody understood the Weber Woods part and the, and that space between Kipling and Lynn, but the park is going to be altered, and there's a lot of good things in there, but I think from a procedural perspective, there, it took some, some of the neighbors by surprise, and we just need to, need to kind of stare that down a little bit as we move forward, and I'd, I'd be interested in hearing an update from staff on how that works. Maybe you have one right now?
We'll be back at the next council meeting.
Oh, how about it?
So it was kind of, we, we took all those comments we heard from, from the council and the residents, and we're tweaking the design is what I, the term I use. We're tweaking, we want to come back next time and...
Well, great.
Show you what we've done and really get that kind of stamp of approval to keep moving forward.
Well, I'll look forward to that. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Member Pierce.
A lot of ground was already covered, and so I am definitely in alignment with my colleagues and the comments that have been made. I will just add one that I thought was maybe two. The, at the Yancey Park, you know, I made comments about a community coming together, and Member Anderson referenced that. The idea to have the fire and police there, that was just a great idea. I don't know whose idea that was, but I think because of that, we had kids there as well. And a number of kids came up to me to talk. They were happy to see, they were, they were happy to see, these are my words, diversity in, in that setting. And so if you were to step back and look, it was a very diverse crowd, and I think everybody was, it felt like everybody was represented there. And there was one little, one kid who attends Highland, so I won't share his name, wanted to just come over, and I was talking to Chief Milburn. We were standing there, the little kid comes over and wants to talk, and so his mom brings him over and we chat with the little guy, and he's interested in being involved in government. And he's in, is that, that's elementary school, right? So I thought that was pretty cool, and had we not done it that way, there might have still been some kids there, but because there were activities, I think that just kind of broadened it and opened up that event and made it just that much more special. And then I really did enjoy the, the transportation tour. It'd be great if everybody could see that. If there's some way we could videotape, provide that awareness to everyone. I'm sure nobody knew there was a wastewater treatment plant in the middle of a parking lot. You've said it before. But to just be able to see what goes on behind the curtains and to have an appreciation for how those decisions get made and who actually does that work, I think that's a, that's a pretty powerful tool when you're starting to make tough decisions on what to do next. And I think that could be a, a piece of what's missing in our community, just having more broad awareness of really how difficult some of these decisions are and some of the work that, that goes on. So hats off to the city staff for sure. I think it's been a great couple of weeks, for sure.
Thank you. Before I went over to Yancey Park yesterday, I stopped, and we have a new business that emerged down at Nolan Maines called Clean Juice, and I couldn't stick around to cut the ribbon because we had to get over to Yancey Park to get there in time to have Member Pierce start moderating a great event and providing his remarks at the beginning. And I think I was one of the last to leave. My wife and I were standing around talking to people, and I looked around, and about everybody was gone, and people were packing stuff up, and I still hadn't gotten some of that dessert that one of the ladies had, that was a custard or something, and I went over there and, and this, there were two African-American women there, and the thinner one was, she reminded me of somebody who was, had this seer or prescient sort of ability, and she said, you know, Mayor? She said, I think, I think B.C. and Ellen, they were here today. They were here today. And you could kind of feel it in the air that it was a really special, special thing that took place yesterday. So thanks to everybody who just participated in that. In particular, I would want to compliment you, Member Pierce, as a co-chair of our Race and Equity Task Force, and Jesse Kingston as well, for causing us to think about the history of our town in a different way, and to all of a sudden realize that there were people that, all the people we've recognized, with naming things after them over time, that we missed some really important people in the process, and we got to take care of that yesterday. So for all your remarks, I really am deeply appreciative, and everybody that was there on the council. And so anyway, back to Clean Juice. I would encourage you all to go on to Clean Juice. They had a little sample smoothie that was very good, and I got some other kind of elderberry juice at home in the fridge I haven't tried yet, another sample. And then the, see, I also attended, I think it was the day before, a France Avenue branding project discussion, and all the property owners out in the South Hill District, I think for the most part, are having a conversation about branding France Avenue, and they've hired a firm out of New York to do some basic research work on, you know, whether people think that's a good idea, and so what should we be thinking about so that, you know, to be, what do we become over time out there to kind of distinguish ourselves and become a, you know, branded in a way where it becomes a more significant draw? And what are, what are the other elements that we might need out there to supplement all of the living and other things that are going on out there, the multifamily, like the Bauer, which is just an extraordinary piece of property for our community, and I think we should be proud of that. And I was up on the rooftop with council members, Jackson and Anderson, and, and one of the guys who was the original, one of the original parties involved said, you know, 20 years from now, Mayor, this place, this whole area out here is going to look like Cherry Creek in Denver. And I think he's probably got a fairly accurate assessment of it because it's, it's changing, and it's, it's some pretty impressive land use that's going on out there in that South Hill District, and I'm sure there's more to come. So that's it. I think that's, that's what I had on my short list. And Assistant Manager Schaefer, anything for us?
Nothing for tonight.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves. We need a second.
Second.
Member Pierce, seconds. Motion to adjourn. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Carry it.